All right, welcome and good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, December 13th, and we will call this meeting to order at 9:02. First, we would ask members who are or folks who are with us, if you are both willing and able to stand for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation will be delivered by Pastor Debbie Garrett of Open Door Homeless Resource Center. Pastor?
Thank you. Let's bow our heads. Father God, we call upon your name this morning to say thank you. Thank you for watching over us and keeping us safe from dangers seen and unseen. Father, we invite you into our meeting place today as we lift up to you our Mayor Brandon Whipple and the City Council leaders of Wichita. Search their hearts and remove everything that is not of your spirit in Jesus' name. Bless and protect their families from all evil. Father, we lift up to you our Police Chief Joseph Sullivan and his family, our police officers, firefighters, and other frontline workers as they put their own lives on the line to keep our city safe. Father, we ask that you place a hedge of protection around this city and increase our immune systems to protect us from the tridemic. Remember our children and youth in hospitals struggling with RSV, those in foster care systems, the mentally ill, and the homeless in our communities. All these things we ask in Jesus' mighty name, we pray. Amen.
... certified by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Madam Clerk?
Approve the minutes of the regular meeting of December 6, 2022.
Has every member had a chance to review the minutes? And if so, is there any discussion? Is there is no discussion, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. I have received two yea votes. Let's try that one more time.
It is frozen, so if you could give an audio?
Did it crash?
Yeah.
Um...
All right. Johnson?
We'll have a roll call.
Frye?
Okay.
Councilmember Blubba?
Yeah.
Uh, Councilmember Bailey? And Councilmember Hoheisel?
Yeah.
Having received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Consent agenda items one through nine.
Has every member had a chance to review the consent agenda? And if so, is there any discussion? If there is no discussion in consent agenda, then I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. So let's not break it this time. Oh, there we go. Have received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Board of Bids and Contracts and Wichita Airport Authority Board of Bids and Contracts dated December 12, 2022.
Good morning and welcome.
Morning, Mayor and City Council. Josh Lauber, Department of Finance. The board of bids for December 12, 2022 are as follows. For engineering, we have the sanitary sewer improvements to serve West Breeze addition and defer to December 19. For purchasing, we have the 33,000 gross vehicle weight rating, regular cabin chassis with felling grapple for all tech industries incorporated for an aggregate bid total of We have the Wichita Art Museum stairs renovation deferred December 19. We have tree planting for Cedars Incorporated for $688,028. We have the structural firefighting coats and pants for Delta Fire and Safety Incorporated for $202,500. This is a redirection. For airport, we have the fuel canopy replacement for PB Hollendale Company Incorporated for This is how to become a vendor with the City of Wichita. These are our current open requests for proposals out on the street, and I would recommend to approve the bid awards as recommended.
Excellent. Is there any questions for staff? See none? Is there input from the public on this item? See none, we're bringing discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item? If there is no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to receive and file the report, approve the contracts, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. Have received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Petitions for public improvements.
Welcome. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Councilmembers. Gary Jansen, Public Works Engineering. The one petition for your consideration today includes signatures representing 100% of the Improvement District and is valid per Kansas statute. RD Wood Commercial Second Edition is in District 5 near 13th Street North and 135th Street West, includes a new petition for sanitary sewer improvements. Staff recommends City Council approve the new petition and budget, adopt the new resolution, authorize the necessary signatures, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Are there questions for staff? See none? Is there input from the public on this item? See none, we're bringing discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item? If there is no further discussion, then I'll make a motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the new petition and budget, adopt the new resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. Have received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Operating partnership agreements with cultural institutions.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Lindsay Benaka, Director of Arts and Cultural Services, here with a handful of operating agreements with our cultural institutions. We have six organizations with contract renewals and lease agreements that are up for renewal. The Arts Council, the Historic Wichita Cowtown, Inc., Kansas Aviation Museum, Inc., Mid-America All-Indian Center, Inc., Wichita Cedric County Historical Museum Association, Inc., and the Wichita Art Museum, Incorporated. A little bit of background, we have a cultural arts plan that was adopted in 2008 and amended in 2013. The result of the 2013 addendum was the identification of cultural institutions that recommended the implementation of the partnership agreements that you see on the agenda today. A cultural institution as defined by the Cultural Arts Plan is an arts and cultural organization with operations and activities in a facility that is owned and/or operated by the City of Wichita. The existing operating agreements have various renewal dates, most of which expire on December 31, 2022. I do want to point out that the Arts Council is not necessarily considered a cultural institution as it does not own and operate a facility, but it follows the same standards and guidelines and reporting rubric as those. And then also, the Museum of World Treasures is not currently up for renewal, so you don't see that on the docket today, but they are identified as a cultural institution. There are three lease agreements, one with the Aviation Museum, the Mid-American All-Indian Center, and the Wichita Cedric County Historical Museum Association, and we propose to maintain the rental amount at $1 per year. The agreement updates that you see reflected in the agreements presented today are updated term limits, so with two years with the option to renew for three years for each organization. We've clarified in the designated voting board seat for a City of Wichita elected official or a designate by the city manager. We've also clarified the collection management and insurance measures and protected the public interest in collections by updating cancellation clauses, really for the museums that have collections that are owned by the private nonprofit board. We just have a safety clause in there in the event of a catastrophe that public interest is maintained. We also updated the non-discrimination requirements, and we've updated the performance measures and annual reporting, recognizing that each organization operates completely different and has different definitions of success. We still have some measurements that have some continuity between all the organizations on their reporting structures. It is recommended that you approve this long list of cultural organizations that bring a value to the community, as staff recommend approval and authorize the necessary signatures. And with that, I'm available for questions, and I do want to point out that many of the museum directors and board of director presidents are in the room available today for questions as well. Thank you.
All right, are there questions for staff? Councilmember Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. Just real quick, not about any specific organization. On the cultural institution annual report, number 10 has to describe the organization's efforts to reach out to diverse and underserved groups. Do we give any suggestions for help on that, you know, looking at Latino professionals, urban professionals, some of these other groups, just to use in like Community Voice or Latino publications?
Right. So we provide guidance and we work with each organization to figure out what makes sense for their programming and their partnerships within the community. We just want to make sure that they're reaching out in this venue to some certain extent, but we don't necessarily define that for them because all of them have completely different programmings and missions.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions? See none? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there input from the public on this item? Oh, excuse me, I do have a question. Vice Mayor Tuttle?
It's actually a comment, so I can wait until after public opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Input from the public on this item? See none? Oh. Perfect. Yes, if you're here to speak to the item, just make your way to the front. Folks will have up to five minutes to talk. We ask for your name and your address if you feel comfortable, and also the five-minute timer is on your screen.
My name is Ann Craybill. I'm the Executive Director of the Wichita Art Museum, Incorporated. My address is 429 North Delrose. I promise I will not take five minutes. I just want 30 seconds really to tell you, I moved to Wichita in the summer to take this position, and part of the reason I wanted to do that was because this collection is phenomenal at the Wichita Art Museum. Being a city-owned museum and a city-run collection, it's truly a privilege to be able to operate this facility and make this collection accessible to all. So over the years to come, we are just really excited to continue to build the collection, diversify the collection, and expand access so that every Wichitaan understands what a treasure you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Taylor Gill, and I have the pleasure and honor of being the Board President of Wichita Cowtown Museum. My address is 309 South Crestway here in Wichita. So on behalf of the Board of Trustees, we truly want to thank you for your consideration of our proposals this morning and for your ongoing partnership. The Board of Trustees truly appreciates the support of the city and our ongoing partnership that we've had over the years. We would like to especially thank Lindsay Benaka, Jesse Coza, and Jackie Gertsen for all of their time and efforts in drafting this revised memorandum of understanding that has not been updated since 2007, and so this was a huge goal of ours. This took a lot of time and effort, and so we truly want to appreciate and recognize those individuals. We would also like to say a special thank you to my co-hassel and Brian Fry for all of their support of Old Cowtown Museum. So thank you for consideration of our proposals.
Thank you. Next speaker. Welcome.
Welcome, or not welcome, but thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Vince Alsetta, Kansas Aviation Museum, Park City, Kansas, 6701 North Longmont Street. I just want to take a second and say thank you again for the work that the council has done, that the staff has done in providing this new updated agreement. We feel that this is going to be helpful for us moving forward. I do want to just to, a question that was asked even, and a good question by Councilmember Johnson about serving underprivileged. One of the things that we took on as an initiative this year was to be proactive in this area. And so simply as just a museum, we made the decision to partner with Child Start here in Wichita and offer free admission to their family and kids every Friday of the year just without, just showing their name and giving us that information, and just as a way to give back to the community that's given so much to aviation. I do want to say thank you to Councilmember Hoheisel, Councilmember Johnson, for their support of our Maddy Project, that is the Black Aviators Exhibit. Just as a quick update, that project is moving along quite well, and the anticipated plan for opening is February of 2023, so we're excited about that, and I want to say thank you to the council for that. I also want to say thank you to those here on the council that have taken the time to accept our invitation to come out and visit the museum and look around. Wichita truly is the air capital of the world, and we still are today because of the hard work, not just of our providers like Spirit and Textron and Bombardier, but the hundreds of suppliers that really are the backbone of aviation in our community. And so thank you to each one of those supplier companies that truly still makes Wichita the air capital of the world for years to come.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good morning. I'm Alan Ferry, 323 North Market here in Wichita, 67202. I am the current President of the Wichita Arts Council, and I just wanted to take a couple of seconds to echo what the other organizations have said. Since the inception, the Arts Council has enjoyed and appreciated our partnership with the City of Wichita. This agreement, this new agreement, will ensure that the relationship continues into the foreseeable future, and the Arts Council looks forward to our continued interaction. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good morning. Dal Dumbo, 11706 West Jewell, 67209. I just want to do the same, echo everybody else's sentiment, and thank you, thank the board, for the council, for your agreement and your continued support of the native community here in Wichita. So, thank you.
Further comment from the public? Thank you all. See none? We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Vice Mayor Tuttle?
Thank you. I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank our cultural arts institutions for your contribution to our community. We know that people come to Wichita for jobs, but they stay in our great city because of the environment that we have and what we have to offer, and cultural arts and arts are certainly a part of that. I also just want to take an opportunity to remind the community that the American for Arts in the City of Wichita participated in an arts and economic prosperity study. We did the last one in 2017, and we're currently involved in that study now. And also just wanted to point out that this year, there is an emphasis on centering equity and inclusion in that study. So as we get more information, we'll be able to also look at that information and see how we can use it to better promote the arts to all and make sure that we're very inclusive. But in 2017, our arts, the Arts and Economic Prosperity Study showed that 43.9 million is spent in Wichita by non-for-profit arts and cultural organizations, and that arts in the City of Wichita is a 94.7 annual economic impact. So as we're looking at arts and culture, not only do we all appreciate it and what it provides to us, but it also certainly is an economic driver in the City of Wichita. So thank you for all that you each do to help make Wichita better.
Councilmember Hoheisel?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to echo what the Vice Mayor just said, and a lot of times we get the publicity here up here saying thank you to us, but the truth of the matter is that you're the ones who are doing all the work. You're the ones who are the heroes in this, so I just want to say thank you for everything you do, preserving the culture of Wichita, preserving the past of Wichita, so that way we know where we've been and can look out for where we're going. So thank you for everybody here who's adding on to the culture of Wichita. I'd just like to say I really appreciate it.
Further discussion? If there's no further discussion, then I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the operating partnership and lease agreements with the Art Council, Incorporated, Historic Wichita Cowtown, Incorporated, Kansas Aviation Museum, Incorporated, Mid-American All-Indian Center, Incorporated, Wichita Art Museum, Incorporated, and Wichita Cedric County Historical Museum Association, Incorporated, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. Have received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Acknowledge and approve the assignment of ownership interest in the New Orleans Baby Cakes LLC DBA, the Wichita Wind Surge.
All right. Welcome.
Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, Troy Anderson, Assistant City Manager. As the clerk indicated, this is the assignment of ownership interest in the minor league baseball team we all know and love is the Wichita Wind Surge. Just a little background information, back in 2018, the Limited Liability Corporation, Yes/No, brought us the New Orleans Baby Cakes. That team was shortly thereafter renamed the Wichita Wind Surge. And in 2019, ownership interest in the Ball Club transferred from Yes/No to CBI Investors LP. And then as of late, there's been proceedings to transfer that ownership interest to Diamond Baseball Holdings LLC. As part of the agreements with the city, there are two agreements as it relates to this assignment of ownership, the Ballpark Development Agreement and the Ballpark Facility Use and Management Agreement. I wanted to point out a couple of things. According to Article 11 of the Ballpark Development Agreement, prior approval of the city is not required for the transfer of the majority interest in the team, provided that the transfer is approved by Major League Baseball. Secondly, Article 15 of the Ballpark Facility Use and Management Agreement also indicates that the team has the right to sell the franchise, provided the new owner-operator receives all approvals from Major League Baseball. And with that being said, we have been informed that Major League Baseball has approved the transfer, the sale, to Diamond Baseball Holdings. And with that being said, I wanted to introduce Michael Burns, Representative of the new owner. Wanted to say a few words.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the opportunity to spend a little bit of time with you. As referenced, there has been the ability to be in front of Major League Baseball this past week, and they have approved the transaction with Diamond Baseball Holdings. We're excited and eager here in the City of Wichita. I know Jordan and his team have built a great relationship with the city manager and his team, as well as with council, and we're eager to take that relationship and continue to grow, continue to build on it, provide plenty of communication and work really well together to make sure that the ballpark continues to be a wonderful community asset. The ballpark itself is one of the things that really was attractive to this opportunity, including the, how the city is growing, how the city is vibrant. There's great growth potential with this franchise, and Diamond Baseball Holdings is really eager to come in and provide some additional resources and leadership to make this one of the jewels of minor league baseball. Diamond Baseball Holdings has 10 minor league baseball teams. We're in the process of finalizing a transaction on three additional, so it'll be 13 teams within the family, and there's great best practices to be shared within those teams and plenty of resources to make sure that each of those teams provides value in their community. So we're going to be seeking to provide quality entertainment. We're going to want to focus on events in addition to baseball for families. We're going to provide great customer service and make sure that we truly remain an asset in this community. We appreciate your attention.
Excellent. Thank you. Is there further discussion from staff?
We're just here to answer any questions.
Questions for staff? Councilmember Blubba?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Pretty excited to have Diamond come here. Sounds like you guys have a lot to offer. Sounds like you're operating throughout the country and very successful, so I have some questions about the original baseball agreement and the connection with the Riverfront property and a status of where we're at today, and does that change anything?
Yeah, so as I mentioned in the presentation, the two agreements that were originally entered into as it relates to the Ball Club, right, are the Ballpark Development Agreement and the Ballpark Facility Use and Management Agreement. These were basically the construction development of the ballpark itself, and then the Facility Use and Management Agreement, for all intents and purposes, a landlord-tenant type of relationship agreement, right? So as one tenant, currently CBI Investors, conveys ownership of the Ball Club, and they exit, and the new tenant that comes in, that assignment of the roles and responsibilities of that tenant within the ballpark. These two agreements have absolutely nothing to do with the Riverfront Development Agreements that surround the ballpark. Two totally separate agreements, two totally separate companies and parties that are involved in that. This is purely the assignment of the ownership interest in the Ball Club. There are no development rights that are assumed by the new Ball Club owners. We continue to work with those parties as it relates to the development agreements, W Wichita Riverfront Limited Partnership and EPC. We continue to work with those folks to try and make sure that they have the tools and resources available to them, and we continue to try to advance that development surrounding the ballpark. We're really excited about a lot of the conversations we're having of late, and we feel like we're very hopeful that those two parties will begin development around the ballpark. we're very hopeful that those two parties will begin development around the ballpark soon.
So, I know you weren't here at the time, but several of us were, and there's so much conversation throughout Wichita about the dollar an acre for the Riverfront property, and obviously, it was an enticement. We were told originally that, you know, we had to be able to provide the development property as an enticement to get the team here. So, can we kind of go through how that separated?
So, that's a great question, and you're right, I wasn't here at the time. The enticement of bringing the Ball Club to Wichita was successful. In fact, we are really excited. The Ball Club itself, in its first two inaugural seasons, went to the Texas League Championship, and so, there's a lot of excitement around the Ball Club itself. So, in that aspect of attracting the Ball Club to come to Wichita, I think that was very successful, in so much as we're standing here before you today with a new owner who is really excited about the progress that the Ball Club has made, are very, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but is really impressed with the facility that the city has built, and is really interested with the long-term implications of what that looks like. So, as far as attracting the Ball Club, yes, entering into those development agreements around the ballpark was successful. We attracted the Ball Club. And again, we have every reason to believe that that development will occur around the ballpark. So, I think everything will take place as originally anticipated. So, but again, the agreements as they relate to the transfer of the Ball Club and the development rights that surround the ballpark, two completely different things.
But it was the enticement to get it.
Yes.
So, that's why.
Yes.
I think the public views this, it may be two separate agreements, but I think the city of Wichita, our citizens view it as a similar, as the package deal. Can we at least get a status update where we're at with the developments?
So, the development continues to advance in the context that obviously, I can't speak for the development party, but there are ongoing conversations with those, with the developer, both WRLP and EPC, to continue to try to make sure that they have the information that they need and the tools and resources they need to continue moving forward with the development of the project. So far, we have an agreement in place. That development agreement that is in place today sets forth the terms and conditions by which the city has rules and responsibilities, as well as the developer. There are some benchmarks. They're out a little farther, 2024, I believe, are some benchmarks that have to be satisfied. But currently, we have a development agreement with those two parties, and we continue to work with those two parties to try to make sure that they have what they need to advance the development.
Again, I don't want to take away from the excitement of Diamond Baseball. Everyone's excited about that, but I'm still just trying to have the public conversation and understand all this better. So, whenever the, it says in our green sheet that they do not need, that the teams do not need the prior consent of council. Do they need any approval by council?
Right, so, the action that you all are taking to land included in the agenda rapport is a letter that approves and acknowledges the assignment of the roles and responsibilities as that relates to the two agreements that I've mentioned here, right? So, within those two agreements, particularly the Ballpark Facility Use and Management Agreement, the new owner assumes certain roles and responsibilities as the tenant of that ballpark. And so, yes, your approval here today approves and acknowledges the sale of the Ball Club and that the assignment of those roles and responsibilities as tenant of the new ballpark, the Ballpark Facility Use and Management Agreement. Yes, there is a letter that's included. This authorizes the mayor to sign that letter that provides them with the approval and acknowledgement.
So, it is a requirement?
It's a requirement that we acknowledge and approve the assignment of the roles and responsibilities as, for a tenant to occupy the ballpark, yes.
It also says in our green sheet that this provision assumes that the team is not in default and the duties and responsibilities in the team do not change. Do we know of any defaults?
No, in fact, we actually walked through the ballpark facility yesterday. Took us about three hours, looked in every closet, behind every door, to kind of do a walkthrough as the current tenant leaves the premise and the new tenant occupies it. We have every reason to believe that they are fully and compliant with all the terms and conditions of the agreements.
And again, I know we're stating legally that it's two separate agreements.
Yep.
Do we know of any defaults with the development benchmarks, or has everything been met?
There are some benchmarks as it relates to the development agreement, but again, those have not passed, so they are future benchmarks, and so, we continue to work with those developers to make sure that they meet those benchmarks as it relates to the ownership of the Ball Club. No.
But the Riverfront property specifically, we don't know of any defaults in the benchmarks, right?
No, there are no defaults of today.
Okay, that's all I've got right now.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. This question's more for you, Michael. I won't speak for my colleagues that were on the council when we went into the agreement, but we didn't do the best job of defining what events were. Can you kind of give some examples of what that would look like for the public, both the small events and the larger events? I think most people thought we were talking about thousands of people every day, and that, that's not the case. So, could you define more of what that looks like?
Certainly. I appreciate the question, and really, all parties benefit from activity at the ballpark. It's really important to keep the asset really up and going. The baseball season is usually confined to a period of time within the calendar, so any opportunity to drive additional events. And in my experience, having operated teams over the past 20 years, that could look like, presently, I'm associated with the organization in Oklahoma City, in addition to having my regional role with Diamond Baseball Holdings. Oklahoma City has a large-scale winter event going on right now with snow tubing that goes from basically the Thanksgiving timeframe through January 1st, with 20,000 or so public entries plus private sessions that go on. We had a number of our properties within the 10 Diamond Baseball Holdings franchises host an action sports touring event this past year called Nitro Circus. But we also have, particularly this time of year, plenty of holiday parties hosting events that have, you know, important stakeholders in the community, bringing their businesses out, being a part of chamber events, being a part of leadership events within the, within the community, utilizing the facilities at the ballparks. And so, we are, we see a lot of opportunity for not only the programming of small-scale events, utilizing the event spaces, having events on the concourse, having events on the field, but also large-scale events that we, as an organization, now know, we can work with promoters that typically do these large-scale, whether it's a concert or third-party events or festivals of some sort, and attempt to work with them to route those through now these 13 or so facilities that we have the ability to work very closely with. So, I anticipate, you know, some of those large-scale events typically take some time in planning, and you're working with promoter who's building a routing tour that may be months out in advance. But I'm confident that the smaller-scale events, the things that the team can go out and recruit, whether that's utilizing nonprofit events or utilizing the facilities in really smart and creative ways, can be acted on quickly and also be things that really benefit the use of the facility. I find it's really interesting in a ballpark that's about to be 25 years old in Oklahoma City that will host individuals that say, I didn't know you guys could do this here. And so, it's consistently getting people into the park, getting them introduced to the ways to utilize the facility that goes beyond the 70 or so baseball games. And I'm confident, based on how the facility was built, there was certainly thought for the event space and being able to use it in creative ways, entry onto the field, all those things that allow for these additional types of events that we're eager to recruit.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions for you. I'm just curious, owning 10 different teams, how do you like stay competitive to like advocate for the Wind Surge when you're, you know, working on different events and things for all of the different teams that you have?
The structure of our organization right now, speaking specifically to events, for example, just coming off that last topic, there's an individual that works for Diamond Baseball Holdings who's focused exclusively on working with promoters and working on the facility and the operations side of our organizations. So, he's working very closely with the groundskeepers, for example, and getting them at times comfortable with having additional events, giving them the context of how to protect the field and go through all the best practices. But the ability to really have that individual focusing on the relationships that he brings to Diamond Baseball Holdings from his past experience, working with promoters, and really having first-person relationships already, I believe is a really strong advantage. In many cases, as a single entity operator, in my past experience, it was oftentimes challenging working with promoters to understand, are you, are you really putting together the best deal? Are you really able to do this in a way that's going to provide not only value to the community, but it's, that it's a smart business decision as well? And so, now, having this individual really focus on the structure of those deals and leveraging our, the strength of our organization by having perhaps multiple teams that get put into a route, you know, for example, there's a third-party event this coming season or this coming summer that we were able to combine the three teams together in terms of trying to recruit that event and assure that it went to multiple communities. So, the focus really rests on that individual and allows the team operators and those in the management level of the local organization to focus on what we need to be doing and providing great customer service, making sure that the events that we do put on are operated as well as they possibly can, so we can work in partnership between the team level and Diamond Baseball Holdings.
I would say, and another question is, I know the community and the public was really looking forward to, you know, lots of events like we keep on talking about, and sorry we keep talking about it, but it's important to everybody. What do you think a realistic goal would be? Like, how many events do you think you would have as a goal outside of baseball? I know it's your first year, so there's a lot to learn in the first year, but like 50 or like 100 or like what, like what do you guys typically do?
I think, to truly answer that, we have to begin to get into the community and know what opportunities exist out there. You know, are there craft beer festivals that already exist, and could one be created? Could one be, could we work with the operators to have it at the ballpark? What types of nonprofit, you know, walks, runs, those types of things are occurring? And do they have an appetite or an interest in doing them at the ballpark or utilizing the plaza facilities or the concourse? So, really getting a better understanding of the opportunities in the community, I think, would be more appropriate for me to answer that. What I, what I can give you perspective is the team that I operate in Oklahoma City, you know, between the dedicated baseball games, high school games that we have, state championships in both spring and fall, the Winter Fest that I referenced a moment ago, that is, that's 45 days or so, that has three or four sessions per day. Last year, we had five nonprofit walks or runs, including a stair climb, which was an interesting one for us. And then, a number of leadership organizations, the Youth Leadership Council, for example, does their kickoff retreat at the ballpark, utilizing both on-field and our meeting facilities. There's a variety of events that have gone on there, and it's, it's north of 150 that have occurred within our facility that we're familiar with, that we know and have recruited over the years. We have a dedicated director of special events who, her sole focus is to go recruit non-baseball events, and I see it. You know, that type of focus, I know the staff here has, has someone that's focused on that as well, and so, providing some best practices and some, you know, perspective on what some of the other teams might be recruiting may be helpful here in this community as well.
Thank you. And then, I just have one, one question for you, Troy. Can you just explain, like, since Jordan is stepping out of the baseball team, like what his, like what he still is doing here, like what his group will still be responsible for, I guess?
So, I don't know all of his dealing, but I do know that as it relates, and I think this is where you're going with this, is he still is involved in Wichita Riverfront Limited Partners, which is one of the parties in the development agreement that I was describing a little while ago. So, Jordan will continue to stay on and continue to advance development of the ballpark facility around the ballpark. There's the office and some of the retail that will be developed around the ballpark. It's my understanding his intention is to continue to remain and see through the obligations and so forth in that original development agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Further questions for staff? Seeing none, thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? Welcome.
Good morning. Andrew Crane, 700 North Market, Guiding Pause ICT. I do work at the Ball Stadium, and you guys did not mention the, the parking at the Ball Stadium. Last season, there, there was some trouble with the parking, and I know you guys said in the plans that we were going to get a transit mobile center and the parking garage. It needs to get done, and that is part of the Ball Stadium, and you guys haven't mentioned that. And also, to help out the blind and disabled community, we need to see that done. Thank you.
Further input from the public? Did you ever, well, before we get to the further input, I think Councilmember Johnson was on the board.
Yep, thanks, Mayor. Bob or Troy, could we give a quick update on the multimodal facility? I know we had a workshop or something about that, but could we just give an update for the public?
Yes, Mayor. The, we're in final design now for that facility. We brought the 30% design plans to the mayor and council. You've seen all of that, so now, they're in the process of finalizing that work, and I believe we will go out to bid in 2023 for that facility.
So, we're making progress on that, and that will happen?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Further comment? Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you. Celeste Resett, Wichita native, WSUNBA grad, founder of Say Century 2, and we broaden our mission now to keep an eye on city finances such as this one. Councilmember Bluebaugh, I loved your comments. You're correct. Wichita taxmate, taxpayers were upset about the Ball Stadium debt we took on, and now we're looking at a stalled development on four acres that we sold for $4, right here. We sold them for $4, two $2 bills, and that development is now stalled, and there's a mediator, I read in the paper, who's working with the city to make sure that moves on. Another thing that taxpayers are a little upset about is we had no vote on the Ball Stadium, and yet, it's cost us $83 million. Star Bonds, $40 million. Tiff Bonds, $14 million. Sid Bonds, $13 million. Geo Bonds, $16 million. So, we've spent at least $83 million on that Ball Stadium. Another thing that taxpayers were upset about, or at least I was, is that the former mayor, Longwell, issued an emergency ordinance to quickly build the Ball Stadium. There were no bid contracts to build that stadium, and that partially inflated the cost. No bid means no competitive bidding. The work was just given to different groups, and that Ball Stadium went up pretty quickly with no bid pricing. Another thing was, that I've talked about before, I know you've heard me say this, is the attendance numbers were inflated by the current city manager. That's been changed under the Star Bond regulations in Topeka, but at the time, development strategies had given us an estimate for revenue, and city manager Layton doubled these estimates. We're not hitting those targets. There's a lot of reasons we're not hitting those targets, but one reason with these estimates that we're not hitting it is by this point in time, we were supposed to double our visitor numbers, and I'm reading development strategies. You paid for this consultant study. We were going to double our visitor numbers with special events will help to more than double visitation at the current stadium for approximately 220 visitors to more than 460,000 when the stadium is fully programmed. The new museum and expanded retail and dining options, and that refers to the $4 acres we sold that are not being developed, but it was going to have retail and dining options, was expected to add another 425,000 annual visitors to the project, and there was a table breaking out these numbers. So, when we don't do development, we don't hit these targets, and the Star Bonds that we issued to build this stadium are currently being paid for, and I've said this before too, I know I've said it numerous times, is being paid for by previous Star Bond projects in the area, and those end in 2027. So, in a few years, if we're not up and running, the bond underwriting agreement, and Topeka asked for this, the state asked us to support the bond payments out of our general fund. So, taxpayers are on the hook for this in 2027, when that previous Star Bond district ends. And if you don't understand that, you need to read the documents and read the bond underwriting agreement and catch up on Star Bond requirements that Topeka issued two years ago. Another thing that's got... Another thing that's got taxpayers upset is there's no call.
So as you have one minute, 30 seconds, did you want to make a comment about the transfer ownership contract or the item, or I want to make sure that we get to that as well?
Sure, I will. I'm all for the transfer agreement because one thing I didn't like about what the current Ball Stadium owners did was they put an 8% hidden development fee on everything that was sold within the stadium. And I brought that before you at another city council meeting in April and told you they were charging that fee, and you all told me there was nothing that can be done. But Merry Christmas to six local charities. Youth Educational Empowerment Program, Touch Closet Equity Initiative, Women's Network, ICT Food Rescue, and Kansas Society for Children with Challenges are all getting a refund because of that hidden development fee. That was a complaint I filed with the DA's office after I came to you for help. So I am glad to see the current ownership change because I think there were many missteps made by the current owners of the Ball Stadium. So I'm hopeful that this change will bring positive public relations and events, as alluded to by you all, and maybe spur development by the former owners with that $4 acreage. Any questions?
Councilmember Blueba?
I just have a question for Bob, because I sat on one of the selection committees whenever we build the ballpark. Can we go through there? Was there any way that there was not, there was no bid contracts? Because I know we went through a couple of different partners and then I don't know, I thought they went out to bid as well. Can you kind of go through that process with us?
Right, thank you, Councilmember. There was a competitive process. It was a design-build approach in order to be able to meet the deadline. So we had two teams that were finalists. I can't remember if we had others earlier in the process. But both teams submitted their plans for moving forward for the design, as well as the contractors that they were going to use, the subcontractors they're going to use in the construction of the stadium. And the council made a decision based on that competitive process. And you're right, there were, I think, three council members that were involved in the review of those proposals and the selection of the final group.
Thank you. Further input from the public? All right, we'll bring discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item? So Bob, can you just address, it seems like the conversation and the level of questions has really been about not just the ballpark in general, but what we're exactly we're voting on today. And so can you address, because I think there's been discussion about development, discussion about ownership of the team, then also about, I guess, the overarching health of the Bond District and the funds in general. Could you, as a head administrator, head of the administration, give us a bit of some background on some of the information that's been brought up?
Thank you, Mayor. As Troy indicated, your action today would be to endorse and approve the assignment of the obligations of the Wind Surge Organization to now to Diamond Baseball Holdings. And they'll assume all of the liabilities and responsibilities of the original agreement that we had with the Wind Surge Organization, which started out as New Orleans Baby Cakes and then moved on in terms of its ownership names. The, that agreement also has information or requirements for us as well as the landlord or owner of the building. So all of those obligations on both parties will remain in effect as a result of this sale. And what you've heard is representation that there'll be more emphasis on not just baseball, but on activities outside of baseball. That's good for us because our pro forma anticipates a revenue stream, a sales tax revenue stream, to help pay off the debt for the stadium. And so anything that's done to generate more financial activity, whether it's during the season or off-season, will help us in terms of our bottom line. So that's the transaction in front of you today. The other issue that has come up is the separate agreement for development rights and the development around the baseball stadium. And that is, right now, the current agreement that we have in place is a partnership between Wichita Riverfront LP and EPC Real Estate Group. The parties have been discussing, have been active in active discussions regarding the development responsibilities. Which party is responsible for what portion of the development? And just a reminder, the components of the phase, first phase that was approved by the council, revised first phase, is a hotel, two office buildings, and a parking garage. And so the parties are still working through the final responsibilities for the development of those. Urgency is important in terms of completing those discussions because there is, there's a firm deadline in your agreement, which I believe is July of 2024, for accomplishing the responsibilities of the development agreement. And so I think some of the council's questions are appropriate in terms of ability to continue to move forward. That development is important for two reasons. One, because it was promised to the community that we would have associated development with this development, with this baseball team and the construction of the stadium. But also, it provides additional revenue streams for the payment of debt. And I think that's kind of in a nutshell where we are today.
Okay. Councilmember Blueba?
You know, everything with Diamond sounds great. Everything sounded great a few years ago. I really want to support Diamond, but I'm struggling a little bit with some of the things that, you know, we've been enticed by the public. We talked about a Ferris wheel. We talked about a Margaritaville on the river. We talked about a metric of over 200 events. We talked about more engagement of the river. And I don't think we've got any of that with this deal, so I'm still kind of struggling with it.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. Sometimes I struggle to bring up other stuff because we're not voting on the development deal today, but it's continued to be brought up that this $4 or a dollar an acre thing was negative. But we never talk about what was required with that. Can you talk about the millions of dollars that have to be spent for selling that for a dollar an acre, as well as the city's potential to take that land back if those metrics are not met? Because that doesn't get enough attention, I think.
Give me just a second, if you would.
I know, that was a really detailed question you have to look up.
I don't know that I have, Councilmember, the full investment in the planned improvements that were in Phase One, but I do have that the revenue generation from that phase, that first phase development was, would be in excess of $52 million. So that'll give you an idea of magnitude of what is expected from the development that I described in terms of office, hotel, and parking garage.
So I couldn't have, as Brandon Johnson, not a council member, given the city $4 and just had that land. I would have had to make substantial investment on those areas with office and parking and all of that in order to be able to purchase that land.
To generate the magnitude of development that is anticipated when this was approved by the council, yes. Okay, thanks, Bob.
Further discussion? All right, see none. I, good discussion overall on this item. I think that a lot of us understand that from the beginning of bringing, of rebuilding the stadium and bringing minor league baseball back to Wichita, I think that we've seen a number of changes and this, and a lot of it was really no one's fault. If you look at really COVID, that first season, that wasn't able to happen, just some of the tragedy with the team with Lou. And I think it's our responsibility to keep looking forward and trying to make this as successful as it can, given all the challenges it's had. So with that, I appreciate the overarching discussion because I frankly think that you can't, we can't really have success unless we're thinking about it at a macro level. However, today is, we should be really focused on new ownership, and it doesn't seem like of the team and acknowledging and approving that. And it doesn't seem like there's much disagreement with that part. So with that, I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to acknowledge and approve the assignment of ownership interest of CBI Investors LP and the New Orleans Baby Cake LLC doing business as the Wichita Wind Surge to Diamond Baseball Holdings LLC and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk open a roll, members cast their vote. Have received six yea votes to one no vote, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Historic Cowtown, Inc. donation. Good morning again. Lindsay Benaka, Director of Arts and Cultural Services with the City Manager's Office. The next agenda item is a unique donation from the Historic Cowtown, Inc. Board of Directors to the museum itself, the Carriage Works Repository. A little bit of background, Cowtown is one of our very unique operations that the city has within Division of Arts and Cultural Services. The museum is a, tells a story of Wichita as a transformation from a frontier settlement to a cattle town, to an agricultural and manufacturing area, and it really reflects the life of the frontier from the 1860s to 1870s. The museum itself has a 20,000-plus piece collection that is, includes textiles, furnishings, furniture, tools, equipment, art, and pertinent to today's discussion rolling stock. The collection is owned and maintained by Historic Wichita Cowtown, Inc. The collection is then presented and curated with the support of the Division of Arts and Cultural Services or city staff who operate the museum. And it's important to note that the museum is fully accredited by the American Alliance of Museums and follows industry standards of collection management. Currently, the museum has 54 historic and recreated buildings within Cowtown. 27 of those buildings are original to Wichita or have been relocated to the grounds from other sites across Kansas. The relocation of those structures is really important as they tell our community stories, and they were protected from demolition and preserved them for the future. The proposed donation of the new building of the Carriage Works Facility will provide a solution to safely store and display the rolling stock collection and further advance the museum's mission. These are a couple of examples of rolling stock that exist within the museum's collection. This is a really unique part of the collection that includes buggies, wagons, and currently they lack adequate storage space, and they've actually never been on display to the public because of this. This is the original Wichita Carriage Works Facility that was owned and operated by the McKinsey and Co. manufacturers. This is what the new Carriage Works Facility is going to be modeled after. The Wichita Carriage Works was opened in 1884, which is fitting with the timeline that Cowtown currently seeks to reenact and re-envision. And it had a reputation of building the finest rolling stock in the Southwest, the McKinsey family. Mr. McKinsey was the founder of the business, and he was a skilled craftsman who's really well-known for the carriages. You can see in this picture that it is quite a large facility. It's two stories. The one that's being proposed is not quite as large, but it's modeled with this in mind and is reflected in the next picture. This is a rendering of the proposed new construction. It's kind of hard to say that we're building a new facility to be at Historic Cowtown, but hopefully you can put the two pictures together to imagine what the proposal will look like. Old Cowtown Museum seeks to tell the story and the growth of Wichita and wishes to create a display of the diversity of vehicles and really showcase Wichita as a transportation hub that we still are today. The proposed location of the Carriage Works Facility is seen on the red dot. I do want to point out that it's across from the livery stable and the veterinarian's office. The stable could house horses in the future, which would provide easy access to the rolling stock right across the street. And then down at the bottom center, house number 37, and then not on display, number 38, which is just south of this, of this image, are both McKinsey houses that were donated by the McKinsey family itself. So it's pretty apropos that the new Carriage Works Facility that's modeled after the McKinsey Co. Carriage House is just down the street from the family's original houses and namesake that were donated by the family itself. In analysis, the new building will display pieces of the rolling stock collection, including carriages and wagons that have previously never been on display. It is important to note and express some gratitude to Historic Cowtown, Inc., that has raised $250,000 to design and construct the new facility. Once it's completed, the city will assume ownership and accept the donation, hopefully with the action item today, and assume ownership, operation, and maintenance of the facility once it's completed. And staff recommend that city council accepts the donation today. I will note that we do have representatives from Cowtown available today if there's any questions, and I stand for questions as well.
Questions for staff? See none, thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? Welcome back.
Thank you. Taylor Gill, 309 South Crestway. Again, the president of Wichita Historic Cowtown. We just want to express our true thank you to the city for your wonderful partnership. The board started working on the Carriage Work exhibit in 2018, and so it has been four years that we have worked together on designing this project, anywhere from selecting to the site to developing the plans, and we are very excited about this exhibit. So thank you for your partnership and thank you for your consideration of this donation.
Thank you. Further input from the public? See none, we'll bring discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item? Councilmember Fry?
Thank you, and this is a wonderful addition to the Cowtown Facility. And I think we need to recognize Bob Curtwright, longtime media reporter for the Wichita Eagle who made a significant donation upon his passing to Historic Cowtown for the facility. And he had a very special place in his heart for Cowtown, wrote about it multiple times, and his gift is allowing this to happen. So we need to recognize that.
Further comments? If there's no further comments, Chair recognizes Councilmember Ballard, as this resides in District Six.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm very excited for the addition to Cowtown as well. I mean, I grew up going there, and it's a hidden little gem, and anything to encourage more people to come and check out the new facility will be awesome. So I'd like to take staff's recommended action and accept the donation from Historic, which includes the design and construction of the Carriage Works Repository, the Old Cowtown Museum, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Is there a second?
I'll second, but I was also going to defer to Councilmember Hoheisel, as he sits on the board.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I gladly second.
Motion has been made and seconded by Councilmember Hoheisel. Clerk open a roll, members cast their vote. Have received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
2023 Contract Renewal with Visit Wichita.
Hello again. I promise this is the last time I'll be up here today. Lindsay Benaka, Director of Arts and Cultural Services with the City Manager's Office. This agenda item is the contract renewal for Visit Wichita's annual contract and performance measures. A little bit of background, the Tourism and Convention Fund supports special activities and conventions and special events. The city of Wichita contracts with Visit Wichita annually to promote tourism convention activities within Wichita. And I do want to point out that Visit Wichita is the leading expert locally in the tourism industry and has decades of experience in marketing Wichita both as a regional and national destination. They track a variety of metrics that we'll talk about in the presentation and show tourism as an economic driver in the community, and they lead efforts in bringing conventions, national and regional meetings, and supporting events to our community. They also partner and liaise with local hoteliers and track occupancy and daily hotel rates. According to a recent study that they completed in 2019, the economic impact of tourism in Wichita was $1.2 billion with a B in 2019, and domestic travel expenditures generated nearly, or they supported nearly 12,000 jobs within Cedric County. And Visit Wichita also provides services under a separate contract that's not up for renewal today with the Tourism Business Improvement District, or we call it TBID, that's directed by the TBID Advisory Board. And with that, I'd like to pass the presentation over to Susie Santa, the President/CEO of Visit Wichita.
Welcome.
Thank you, Lindsay. Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. It's a pleasure to be here. Susie Santa, Visit Wichita, 515 South Main Street. I'm going to piggyback just a moment before I advance the slide on a little bit about the background of what Visit Wichita does and expand a little bit on what Lindsay just said. You know, our role is to drive visitors to Wichita, to be an economic driver to the city, the region, the state, which in turn grows tax revenue generated by the term industry and supports thousands of local jobs. Destination marketing organizations are very specialized, and there are many moving parts and pieces and layers. And Visit Wichita, like these organizations, are led by And Visit Wichita, like these organizations, are led by experts in attracting and securing meetings, conventions, and sports, and then producing the sporting events, also led by experts in tourism research, tourism strategy, and tourism marketing. And Visit Wichita has the relationships with meeting planners and sporting rights holders, as many of the events that we work on take three, four, even five years to secure. So the lead time, the consistency, the relationship building is critical. The team at Visit Wichita understands the nuances of inspiring visitors and events that benefit locals and tourists alike, and we understand the visitor trends and the visitor data to assist our efforts as well as our partners' efforts. We play a pivotal role in connecting visitors to our local businesses. In fact, on the visitwichita.com website, the Things to Do is a number-one-visited site, and visitors rely on that. They rely on that page to understand what to do when they come here, not only be inspired to come to Wichita, but what to do when they get here. And Visit Wichita, like all destination marketing organizations, have the industry expertise, the national connections, and relationships to provide a positive economic return on investment. And I'm really proud of the team we have back in the office that are watching today, a group of hard-working individuals. We've had a really good year, and after the last couple of tough years, it's really exciting to see that tourism and visitation to Wichita has returned. I want to share in your packet a few of the, let's see. There we go. Our performance indicators, again, we always look at the economic impact, and it's measured by the future group bookings, as well as being good financial stewards of the dollars. So some of our results for 2022, when we look at our future group bookings and our service bookings and our leisure visitors, you can see 10s, 20s, 30s million, 63 million in visitors, 34.2 million in economic impact, as well as our future group bookings. And then we look at the, you know, being good stewards of the dollars given, and for every $1 we spend, there's a return of 1921 back in economic impact. And I'd love to talk briefly about a couple of the highlights that are in your packet. Really excited to see all of our digital efforts drive back to the website, huge increases with over 2.2 million page views. And I want to take one moment and talk about Small Market Meetings Conference. This is a great example of an event that we won five years ago, the opportunity to host that, so that longevity and that consistency. So we won the opportunity to host it since 2018. This is a conference that brought about 80 meeting planners from around the country to Wichita. It also brought cities from around the country that do just what we do to Wichita to have meetings, and everybody is vying for that meeting planner to have their meeting in their city. But as the host city, we got to showcase Wichita. I want to thank the mayor. He came out on a Sunday night to address the group, and the meeting planner was so impressed and said, "This doesn't happen in every city." So we really appreciated you coming out. But we rolled out the red carpet, and when I talked to some of my friends locally and I told them what the meeting planners were going to do, they were like, "Oh, my gosh, you know, I want to go do that." But the afternoon, we had five different tours. They could choose one of them. They went on a brew tour, and they saw some of our best breweries. They went out to the zoo and got a behind-the-scenes look. We took them to Frank Lloyd Rhyde House. We showed them the Great Sweet Treats Tour of experience in all the sweets at Clifton Square, and of course, Coca Dolce and Nifty Nut. And we took them to the Riverfront Stadium, and it was so fun to see the meeting planners go underneath, which I had never been before, and get a step up in the batter's box and practice batting and throwing a pitch and seeing their name on the big screen. And the enthusiasm for Wichita was just overflowing. And then that night, to host them at the Museum of World Treasures, to take them to River City Brewery for dinner, and then have dessert at our own Keeper of the Plains. They walked away saying, you know, "This is a place we can hold our meetings." So we got to showcase the facility, showcase Wichita, and that's just one of the events that we've hosted this year. But I want to again thank the mayor for coming out, for your support, and we are confident that hosting these planners is going to bring future business to Wichita. And a few other of the events that are direct, we're excited about booking this year. The 2022 boxing, we hosted hundreds and hundreds of junior Olympic hopefuls here in Century Two, and if you didn't get a chance to see it, they're going to be back in 2024. 2022 is the first time Wichita ever got to host them, and it was so exciting to see the rings in Bob Brown Expo and all the incredible athletes there competing. And again, wouldn't have happened if it weren't for the sports team back at Visit Wichita going after and getting this event. And we talk about not only winning the right, you got to produce them and you got to hit a home run, and the NAI wrestling is a great example of that. We hosted them for the first time in 2020. We had a three-year contract, 2020. Those were interesting years. It was the week before COVID, and then we were the first group back with them in 2021, and we rolled out testing the 500 athletes, and then we hosted them this year. So excited they'll be back in '24 and '25. So it takes not only winning them, but hitting a home run. I also want to talk briefly about synchronized skating. To have three sheets of ice within our downtown area is incredible at Interest Bank Arena and then at the ice rink. They've been here now, the synchronized skating, we've hosted them two years of the last, like, six or seven, and they'll be back in '24. Huge. And then finally, I want to talk about one event, and I do want to make another plug to the mayor on the Youth Soccer National President's Cup. This is a great win for Wichita, and I have to tell you, when we put together our bid and we put together the video that says, "We want you to come to Wichita," we had the support of the mayor, we had the support of Commissioner Lopez. Lieutenant Governor Toland spoke into that, as well as the head coach at US at the Kansas City Soccer about why Wichita and Stryker Field is the right facility, and we beat out some heavy hitters, and we're hosting over 1,000 athletes for a week long. They bring their family, and they'll be at Stryker Field this coming summer. So it's been a great year. We've got some new business on the horizon. Again, I appreciate all of the support when I've called on those of you on the bench to step in and help us secure. You've been there, and a huge thank you. I'll turn it back to Lindsay for the financial considerations.
Thank you, Susie. So for financial considerations, there is a proposed annual allocation not to exceed roughly $2.5 million. And they do have a couple of caveats within that allocation fund. They have a match option that each dollar raised over $200,000 can be matched not to exceed $100,000. They also have a convention promotion contingency fund with a reimbursement of up to $150,000. And also to note that Visit Wichita is funded specifically by the transient guest tax funds. And it's recommended that City Council approve Visit Wichita's 2023 contract renewal and authorize the necessary signatures, and Susie and I are available for questions as needed.
Thank you. Is there any questions for staff? See none? Thank you. All right, we'll open up to public input on this item. Welcome back.
Good morning. Celestrus App, Wichita native, founder of Say Century Two. Our mission is broadened to include oversight of City Hall finances. Anyone listening should check our Facebook page at WichitaC2. We just celebrated a sold-out 50th anniversary Wichita Wurlitzer concert that attracted visitors from throughout the state of Kansas. But turning to the subject at hand, Visit Wichita's contract. Here you go again, giving Visit Wichita another contract renewal without renegotiating the details, without looking at the compensation, without looking at the financial statements, without evaluating expenses, without critically evaluating Visit Wichita's services to determine if taxpayers are getting what they paid for. The boxing visitors who walked by are volunteers while we were gardening at Joan of Arc had no idea where to go in Wichita. So we helped them. We act as unofficial tour guides of Wichita. We told them where to walk to Delano and to Old Town, and even took them on the gardening UTV to show them around downtown Wichita. I have asked you numerous times to evaluate the Visit Wichita contract. I'm asking for accountability. I'm asking for transparency, and now I'm adding common sense. First, put this contract out for competitive bid. Stop automatically renewing this contract year after year after year after year. Visit Wichita gets $2.5 million from the Tourism Business Improvement District, a separate contract as referred to, but they get $2.5 million from the hotel guest tax. That's $5 million annually. I'm sure there are other marketing companies that would bid on this business. That's called competitive bidding. Taxpayers might actually get a savings. Visit Wichita is slipping on performance goals. They didn't meet their 2022 goal for Objective Two. I'm not sure you saw that when the numbers were being put up there, but take a look at Objective Two for the year 2022. That's supposed to be how we reward them. Second, Visit Wichita expenses are ridiculously high. Visit Wichita president is making $300,000 a year in salary. That was in the Wall Street Journal recently. Let's compare that for a minute. The medical director of Grace Med Health Clinic makes less. The superintendent of our Wichita USD 259 schools makes less. The Wichita's chief of police makes less. The WSU Barton School of Business Director makes less, and you know what? Even Wichita's city manager makes less than Visit Wichita's president. Common sense indicates this job is not more important than running Wichita. So why don't you take a look at some of the expenses on their financial statements and start questioning the numbers? Put their offices in the Brutalist former public library and save another $300,000 per year. Use saved funds to improve the Brutalist Library building. Now I'm going to put you on the hot seat a little bit more. Why do wealthy developers sit on Visit Wichita's board? Is it because these developers rake in millions from the hotel guest tax for their private hotels? You've heard me talk about the Fairfield Inn getting $4 million, and when it was booked on our books as debt, it was called Stormwater Utilities, and we're still paying for it. Or is it because some of you sit on Visit Wichita's board and approve of these special interest developer deals? Or is it because you let Wichita, Visit Wichita, spend thousands on the Riverfront Master Legacy Plan, and now they're spending thousands more on continued studies to revitalize that plan? Here's what I know. Visit Wichita is a business that does tourism marketing for the city of Wichita. If I was in your job, I would ask the city manager to issue a request for proposal and put this job out for competitive bidding. That's long overdue. This is a job that pays $5 million, and let the bidders know that Visit Wichita is sitting on $3.5 million in cash and investments. That will certainly sweeten the deal to bid on the contract. But hey, don't listen to me. Approve this contract again with no questions asked. Let Visit Wichita rent offices in Waterwalk and charge taxpayers for the rent. Ignore the available building in the heart of downtown Wichita, the former Brutalist Library, and let them build up a slush fund to pay whatever they want to spend money on. Taxpayers are watching. Public interests, not special interests, will determine the next election results. Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Councilmember Blueba?
Can we verify if that salary is correct? I didn't remember it being...
To my knowledge, we don't advise or have anything to do with the salary of staff at Visit Wichita as a private organization, so that's not city employees.
So we can't verify whether it's...
We don't have a say over the salary of a private organization, is what it sounds like. Is that true?
To my knowledge, no.
Councilmember Hoheisel?
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, can we get a quick update on where we are with the Brutalist Library? Yeah, just seeing if we can get people in the building and what the processes were and was Visit Wichita included in the possibilities?
Councilmember, good questions. So we went out with a request for information, received a number of, not proposals, but expressions of interest, right? And some that were a little more developed than others. We're in the process of using that information to help put together an RFP document. I would imagine that an RFP will go out in the first quarter. It's for a temporary use of the facility, right? So we anticipate anywhere from two to five years until we know exactly what we're going to be doing with the Bob Brown facility and the reuse of the round building. But we want an active use in the building. So it'll be the first quarter next year that we'll solicit proposals for the actual use of the building. Thank you.
Councilmember Ballard?
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, maybe this is a question for you. Is there a reason this doesn't go out for RFP?
For these services?
To address the last question.
For these services or for the use of the library?
For the services.
I'm not a, this is a model that's followed around the country. In my career, I've never seen a private party that is able to provide all of the services that are required of a convention and visitors bureau, because it's, you could probably find a firm that would do marketing work for the community, but not book meetings and conventions, work with meeting planners, go out and promote the community in the way that they do. It's a, I'm just not sure there's a business model out there for a private firm, and I'm not aware of any in the region that would be able to compete and provide the depth of services. So if anything, we'd probably have to bifurcate the work, and you'd have to split it out, and so it wouldn't be a coordinated effort at all. I'd also have to ask law to do some research, because I can't remember what is required by state law, especially in terms of our use of guest tax funds, and whether or not those have to go towards a nonprofit agency that is involved in convention and visitors activities. I do know that there's a direct tie for the T-Bid dollars and for the dollars going back to Visit Wichita. So that would be a chunk of, a big chunk of their budget.
And this is renewed every year?
Pardon me?
This is just yearly? No, okay.
Correct.
That's what I was going to follow up on. This isn't just a marketing contract. It's more services than that. Are we aware of any top 50 city that doesn't have a tourist organization, that doesn't have a Visit, insert city name, organization? Like, my understanding, this is a pretty common model.
Mayor, that's my understanding too. I think you may find some cities where departments play somewhat, a city department plays somewhat of a role, but I'm not aware, again, that's not my area of expertise, but I'm not aware of a model where you would have a private firm that would be able to do the depth of what we need in order to be able to book, not just into C2, but book into all the convention facilities for the hotels and other meeting spaces in the city. By the way, Mayor, if I could, I know I wasn't asked the question, but there was a discussion about lack of transparency and accountability on the part of the city, and the council took action, I think, over a year ago to require regular reports. And so on your consent agenda today, you've got quarterly reports and monthly reports from Visit Wichita, and that comes to you, as I said, on a regular basis.
Yeah, that's something that we started a few years back as it was requested.
Further input from the public on this item? Welcome.
I'm Xander Finolio of 610 South Wheatland Circle. I just wanted to come up here and bring up a suggestion of, like, more public opinion on this. I just know it's not a very good thing on, like, to hear stuff from my friends. I have friends who live out in Indiana, and it's, like, known them for six years. It doesn't feel very great whenever we all this plan out for this stuff, and they go, "Why Visit Wichita when there's nothing to do?" And I don't know if it's, like, more public events or, like, I don't know, like, advertisement for the things that happen, but like what you were saying with the whole tour, tour of Wichita, how that being just like a common thing of every city, I don't really know any young people visiting their, like, a city's website just to find out what to do. They just get it from, like, events, like, or like Orlando putting out, like, stuff about Universal Studios, and you see that online and all that stuff. I don't know if there's, like, any more public opinions on that stuff.
I'm sorry, are you trying to tell us that there is a city in Indiana talking smack about how Wichita does their business?
A little bit. It's just, I don't know. It doesn't feel too good to hear those bad things about the place I've been living here for 17 years.
So, and I'm just, we've got some time, and I'm just going to spitball, because frankly, and forgive me if this observation is wrong, you seem like a young person, and we don't get a lot of folks who, of your generation, who speak to these items. So I would love to take a moment, because I know everyone thinks about websites when it comes to getting information out. What would you recommend as someone who, younger generation, when it comes to not only getting information out, but perhaps what you want to see?
It's just, like, more publicity towards things that we know that people are just using in general, like, I mean... using in general, like, I mean, I like scroll through Instagram like two hours a day, it's like, but guarantee like half the generation does that anyway. It's just like, maybe trying to push, push out a little bit more of like, I don't know if it sounds stupid, just like towards what people have already been looking at. I know the, I know the whole consensus is that we just, we don't really put our opinion out there, but it's just, I mean, it doesn't feel too great when, I think the most time that I ever have, like, in our city is just going down to Town East, because it's, I mean, that's where everyone's at, is where all the stores are at, is where I feel like I can talk to the most people. And it's just like these, these other events. I know there, there's like these really cool sporting events, but like, I mean, my parents are a little geeky, but I mean, it's like, they travel all these, all like, all these other states just to go to like a Comic-Con. And I think, I don't know if we've ever really hosted those things here. I just think that's something that was put into people's minds is that, be like polling opinions.
So more events geared towards younger folks that people can attend for entertainment value? So is the read that I'm getting from your presentation as well? Not just sporting events where people are coming into the city to participate in a sporting event, but also, we call them quality of, quality of life events, stuff that, something like a Comic-Con that you and your parents could go, just visit, that type of stuff as well, is something you want to see in the future?
Yeah, I mean, not to like put down like these other businesses who are like doing this for charity and stuff like that. Like, I don't want to throw all that stuff down, because I feel like that would be more important, but like, just trying to find out what, what more people are interested in or like, not saying that people are more interested in that stuff than sports, but like, I don't know, I feel like that might help to get money for the city if like, we were able to vote on seeing what we'd actually want to see here. I don't know if that's...
Okay. And Bob, can we go ahead and get a memo on what Instagram is? And of course, communicating on social media was the other takeaway from your presentation.
Oh, yeah, I'm pretty sure it could just be anything like social media wise.
Excellent. Well, we appreciate you being here and giving us your feedback, so thank you. Vice Mayor Tal.
Thank you, Suzy. Could you join us for a moment? Thank you. Based on some of the questions that were presented to us today and then also following the chat on YouTube, I do think it's a good question. Sometimes we all get so entrenched in what we do every day that we realize maybe not everybody understands what somebody else does in their job, right? And so I know, for example, with the soccer tournament that's coming to Striker, the bowling congress that we've had at North Rock, whatever it may be. You mentioned the term depth of services that you offer. Obviously, it's months and months in the making, but for example, to bring the National President's Cup to Striker, could you give us just a high level overview so that we understand it's not just marketing and that the services are deeper and richer than that? So, you know, I know you could probably talk for an hour about that one, but if you could synthesize what depths of services you provide that are unique?
Sure, and thank you asking specifically for that one. That's never been here. And that took an experienced sales manager on team seeking that out, looking for that information, looking for that event that's never been here, finding that information, developing a relationship with the planner, who's the rights holder, looking for an RFP, finding the RFP, submitting the RFP. The RFP is not just a piece of paper that we go back. It is a very detailed, can be anywhere from 15 pages to 70 pages. That's a digital beautiful display of everything happening in Wichita, as far as our facilities that might work for them and the hotels and everything. And the RFP can be so detailed to needing, whether it's meeting space or storage space. It can be big, it can be small, but it's going through that. And sometimes those can be extremely daunting. So you go through the plan, then we get, submit it. We find the support from the community to make sure it's a right fit for the community, because a lot of them require the support. And in this case, as we talked about, we went all the way to Kansas City to the head coach of the soccer, our only professional team here in Kansas, to the lieutenant governor. But then it's now submitting it and working and building that relationship and finding what they need. And then what the meeting planner takes, is takes it from a lot of cities and keeps dwindling it down. Then when we got on the shortlist, we actually hosted three site visits and we bring them in and we show them the facilities and we show them the hotels and we show them what it can be done. And we meet in the offices and we talk about all the facilities, all the services that we offer, from social media efforts to digital efforts, et cetera, to help them make their event be successful. Then we, after that, they'll go back and bid on it. So for that example, it wasn't, you know, marketing. It was grassroots efforts, finding them, building that relationship, cultivating it, bringing here, highlighting the city, putting together that package, and then after winning it, and now it's on the back end helping them market it to be successful, making sure all of our businesses know about it. We play that liaison with the businesses, so when the athletes come here, they feel welcomed and there's welcome marquees across the board. So that's just one example on one piece of business. And we do that, and again, across on every piece of business that comes through. But hopefully that gives...
Thank you. That gives me even a richer understanding of all the steps that are involved. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember, Councilmember Ballard?
Thank you, Mayor. Suzy, I just have a question. Speaking to the gentleman that was up here, what can, do you guys do any type of polling? Or like, what does that look like as far as, I mean, we know not everybody's into sports, and I know that's not all that we do, and I get excited about it, but how do you guys decide? Do you ask? Do you send out surveys? Like, what does that look like?
When we think about what our primary role is to bring visitors in, but it's a great win for the community when the reason we're bringing visitors in is also a quality of life. And a great example, I think, of that is NCAA tournaments. You know, great quality of life, but it brings visitors in. So our first and foremost is what makes sense to bring those economic dollars into the community? And a lot of that depends on the facilities that we have. And when we talk about sports, you know, soccer is a great example, because we have great facilities. And so we have to look at what facilities we have from a destination that meet the demand and then make sense financially, our good economic driver, et cetera. I do want to make a comment that we are on social media out there as well, from TikTok to Instagram to, you know, Facebook. And so we look at, as far as polling, we're always looking to see like, what makes sense and how do we help some of those homegrown events continue to grow that makes sense for our local residents? But first and foremost, we're trying to figure out bringing new dollars into the community.
But do you like put out any type of surveys, like ask kids that might not be into sports, like to help, I don't know, see what people want to go to or participate in or...
From a local perspective? I'm trying to think, I don't know that we have locally really looked at what locals want to go see locally in that perspective. I don't believe we have.
Okay, thanks.
Sure, thank you.
Councilmember Hoheisel?
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, what all do we use a transient guest tax for? I know it's, you know, to get attractions coming here, visitors coming here, and also the fund to maintain Century 2. What else do we use?
Those are the primary purposes. And in fact, we've got an increased emphasis on the use of the dollars for Century 2. You approved the CIP at $18 million for over a 10-year period, and I believe we're, don't quote me on this, but I'm pretty sure we exhaust most of our guest tax during that 10-year period for those improvements and as well as the money that goes to Visit Wichita.
Okay. If we did send this out for an RFP at any time, how many different RFPs do you think we would need to fulfill the duties that Visit Wichita is presently?
I don't, I don't want to say off the top of my head. We'd have, you'd have to break down their responsibilities and then try to match them with private expertise that's in the community.
Okay. And also, could we, as sometime here in the near future, maybe take a look at what other like-sized cities are doing in this regard? And just in that way, we know like what the process is out there, any ways we could possibly improve it? Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. I always appreciate when young people come up and speak to us, whether it's at the meeting or when we're at classrooms. Just a thought, because I was just at a couple of classrooms this week or last week. Have we ever considered maybe bringing in a few young people who are influencers just to see how to communicate with them? I always hear about new apps when I talk to young folks, and they make me feel really old when they talk about those, but they kind of know how they communicate with each other, and that might be something to consider. I know I've talked to Jim about that with our communications, but something to think about, maybe.
When you say young people, I feel really old, and I know that I am. We currently do work with interns, and there's actually, we have an intern in right now that's doing just that, that's a WSU student.
Sounds like there might be one in the back there that wants to help out. Thank you.
Further discussion? Further input from the public? Not sure if we finished input from the public or if we're just interacting at this point. So discussion from the bench? All right. Well, if there's no further discussion, then I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the contract and authorize necessary signatures. There's a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Clerk Rollupon, roll. I've received seven yea votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Good morning, Mayor. Members of the City Council, Mark Manning with the Department of Finance. Today, I want to go over year-end budget adjustments and closing adjustments. So each year, when you adopt the budget in August, we certify that budget with the state of Kansas, and that sets the total maximum dollars that we can spend by fund. But we at the city, based on our city policies, have a more granular level of reviewing budgets for a variety of reasons. And because of that, often at year-end, it is necessary for us to come to you and present a few closing adjustments that are necessary so that we can close out our books. So just a brief description of our year-end closing process. First of all, I'd point out to you that all the adjustments that I will discuss today have been included in the guidance that you have received previously about our financial situation, particularly the third quarter report that I believe Nikki presented to you last Tuesday. So everything here is consistent with what you have heard in the past. I'd also tell you that these adjustments that are included in the agenda report include dollar amounts that probably will be the maximum amount we will have to adjust. It's pretty likely that some of those will actually be less than what is included in the agenda report, and that's because a lot of our activity at year-end occurs literally at the last day of the year. Some of our revenue streams come in after Christmas, some of our expenditure adjustments occur after Christmas. So we're estimating, but we're probably a little bit on the high side on a few of those estimates to provide flexibility. And finally, I would point out that the adjustments and transfers that are recommended are designed to set us up for future flexibility and also are designed to align non-recurring revenues and expenditures, generally speaking. So there's generally three reasons why we do year-end adjustments, and they're outlined in the agenda report, so I won't go over each one specifically. Typically, if we have higher activity than what we have budgeted, oftentimes that will require expenditure adjustments. I would also point out oftentimes it will also increase our revenues too. Park Recreation is a good example of this this year. They've had increased activity, which is a really good thing. It's increased our revenues, but it will require some expenditure adjustments. Oftentimes, our staffing costs are higher than what we estimated. Estimating staffing is a complicated business when we prepare the budget, and sometimes due to a variety of reasons, those costs exceed budget at year-end. The Police Department is probably the most significant example this year. Due to challenging circumstances filling positions, they've had to provide more overtime in order to provide the level of staffing that we require, and that has, will probably cause them to exceed their salary budget a little bit this year. And finally, we often have to do a lot of technical adjustments. This has to do with relatively mundane things in the creation of budget. For example, transit charges off some of their salaries to grants and a few other areas. If those charge offs aren't quite as much as we initially anticipated, sometimes we have to do adjustments there. I wanted to highlight ARPA briefly. You may recall that one of the purposes of ARPA is to offset revenue losses in the general fund. Of course, ARPA has been very important to our financial stability over the last couple of years. We had 4.7 million budgeted for that in 2022. It's likely that that will not be required, which I think we pointed out previously in the past. Today, we're recommending that about 1.7 million of that instead be used for one-time purposes, including about 1.2 million dollars in equipment for firefighters, bunker clothing and radios and protective clothing, things of that nature. And also that we use some of it to solidify our financial position at the ice rink, which has had some equipment issues that have caused some lost revenue issues there. The remaining ARPA funding will be available to offset any revenue losses in 2022, or probably more likely will be available to provide flexibility to the City Council in the future years. Finally, a few transfers that we're recommending today. We replaced some public safety laptops earlier this year out of the IT Equipment Fund. Some of those costs were a little bit higher than we anticipated, because due to our vehicles, we had to replace more of the mounting brackets and things of that nature. So we're recommending that we transfer 750,000 to the IT Equipment Fund. Again, that'll place us in a better position in the future in order to replace some of our equipment needs. There's also an opportunity to upgrade our circulation technology in the library system due to something that came up recently as we were working on some capital improvements for the library. And so we're recommending we transfer 450,000 to the Innovation Fund to fund that. That'll make the library more efficient and also should enhance their customer service ability. Finally, to increase the capacity of the Propel program, we're recommending a transfer of an additional $50,000 to that program. But again, more importantly, these adjustments will help us close our books in 2022 and will facilitate that. So staff would recommend that you authorize us to make these year-end budget adjustments, establish the project budgets, and approve the proposed year-end budget transfers. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Questions for staff? Councilmember Frye?
Thank you. Mark, could you go back to one slide and give me a little more detail on the Propel budget? Because I understand that was funded with Hyatt proceeds, and that's how that has been funded. But now we're, why are we increasing that capacity? Is it because we've had such success and there's a lot more demand? Give me some context, please.
Yes, sir. You are correct in everything you said. Again, it's like a revolving fund. Those funds will be paid back to us eventually. But my understanding is the interest in that program and the applications for funding in that program have been very strong, so we'd like to increase the capacity of that program so we have more opportunities to fund more applications.
Because I think we did increase the scope of it, because originally it was just District 1. And then we increased it across the city. So I'd like to maybe get a recap on where those numbers are. Not today, because I don't believe you probably have it in front of you, but I'd just like to know a little bit more in-depth how successful that is.
Yes, sir.
We, we are victims of our, our success, right? Yeah, and so, and we're happy to tell that. The 50,000 would allow us to process the remaining applications that are considered to be viable. And then we will bring a report back to you and we'll ask the council to weigh in on next steps as we start to put the budget together for next year.
Councilmember Hoheisel?
Thank you, Mayor. How much did we put into the general fund stabilization reserve this year?
We have not transferred anything into the permanent reserve yet. We would anticipate, as I think the agenda report notes, if our appropriate fund balance is going to exceed 15%, we would anticipate transferring some of that into the permanent reserve at year-end.
So do we think that that's going to happen?
I think there's a likelihood it could. Again, that's one of those things you probably won't know until the very end of the year.
Okay, is the general fund reserve, is it in a healthy shape right now?
Well, it depends on your perspective, I guess, but it is within our policy guidance. I will point it, put it that way.
Okay.
We've talked a lot in the past about the importance of general fund reserves. You know, our rating agencies would probably like to see a little bit higher level, but again, we are within our policy guidance right now.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. Just some additional information to Councilmember Frye on Propel. We started with $88,000 of Hyatt funds from District 1, and then EnTrust Bank saw value in it, contributed 100,000. We made it citywide, and then Sally was able to find 220,000 from HUD funds to add to that. So we were close to half a million dollars, and it sounds like we are doing really well, so we're adding more to it.
Huge benefit for our small business community, particularly if, if access to capital with increasing interest rates becomes an issue with expansion. It's, it's no surprise that it's being utilized the amount that it is. Councilmember Ballard?
Thank you. I just had a question if this includes any of the requested positions for their fire admin that were shown in the living room study?
This includes the equipment that the Fire Department requested, but is your question, does it include any additional positions? No, it does not.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Bluebaugh?
It does sound like the Propel program's going great. Do we, do we have any late pays or any defaults or anything that looks like it could be leaning that way? Any past 30-day lates or anything like that?
That's probably something that we should take a look at you and report at a later date. I really can't answer that for you right now, but we can certainly look into that.
Thanks, Bob.
Further questions for staff? See none. Thank you. We're open up to public discussion on this item? Welcome back.
Hi, Celestra Sett. Again, you know who I am, Safe Sentry Two founder, Wichita native. I need to clear up real quickly three misconceptions after I sat down to my comments. First, Visit Wichita statements do not show salaries. It's not a detailed monthly report. I've tried to cora more detailed expense reports, and it's been denied. So I don't know what kind of special relationship we have with Visit Wichita, but I can't cora to get that information. And when I wanted to speak on their audited financial statements, it was on the consent agenda. My request was denied, so I couldn't even talk about their audited financial statements this August when they were published. Also, back to the city manager's comment, it is a charter ordinance that tells us what the hotel guest tax was created for, not a state ordinance, but a charter ordinance from the city of Wichita. And the first priority of that charter ordinance was supposed to be Sentry Two, but as I've talked about before, millions has been scraped off for private entities like the Fair Filled Inn. That's not a nonprofit. That's a developer's interest. So I just wanted to correct those misconceptions when I sat down. Okay, regarding the year-end budget adjustments, one thing I noticed in the agenda was the water treatment plant. There's a million-dollar adjustment for that water treatment plant, and my question is, what has that increased activity on the water plant been attributed to? The other change on the year-end budget was that ice rink number over 400,000 due to transition costs. You know, their second ice rink has been broken for quite a while, and let's talk about the state of that building. Brandon Stevens and Rodney Stevens, owner of the Genesis Gems, had the management contract of the ice rink. We gave him 750,000 in a loan to take care of that building. And I know we're currently in, the paper reported, a lawsuit for breach of contract on paying back that loan. I would say if you get that 750,000 back, which he owes us, that should take care of that budget override. The second thing is, when he moved out of Genesis, out of the Genesis Gems on the second floor of the ice rink, he ripped up the carpet, he yanked out laptop screens, he put holes in the drywall, and he caused extensive damage to the second floor, and nobody watched him do it when he moved out of the Wichita Ice Rink. So is this part of the extra cost we're having to pay as taxpayers because of the damage he did this year when he moved out of the building? That's my second question. So I'd really like to know where are we at on the lawsuit against Rodney and Brandon Stevens for owing us money? And are any of those costs associated with the damage they did when they moved out of the building? Thank you.
All right, we are on the year-end budget adjustments item. Further input from the public? See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Further discussion? Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. When could we have the ice rink up and running with these budget adjustments, the second ring?
The second rink is not up yet. We're in the process of going up for bid for the second chiller and replacement of equipment.
Okay, so not, no solid timetable at this point?
No, because of supply chain issues that we could encounter, I hesitate to give you a date, but it's, we're pushing with some urgency, so we have full programming at the facility.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, Bob, I have another question about fire. So we're buying the equipment, but we don't have the new positions budgeted? Please fix that for me.
Yeah, I think there's some confusion regarding the question you asked me. I thought you were asking about management positions that were included in the study. Management positions are not, you have not approved those, actually, you have not technically approved the study itself. What we have built into the budget is equipment for the 42 grant positions that we'll be receiving through the SAFER grant. And so we wanted to make sure that they had all the appropriate personal equipment when they came on board. So that's what you're approving.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you. Related to the speaker's questions, we obviously can't probably answer anything related to the lawsuit with the Stevens. But the second question about the water fund and the billion dollars over budget, can we give some specifics on as to why that is so high?
We can, and someone's coming up. We can say something on the lawsuit, though. We amended our filing, and that's a public filing, and that includes the expenses that were associated with the removal of equipment when Genesis left.
Welcome.
Penny Fries, Public Works and Utilities. Mark had a slide up, but basically it was, you know, when activity increases, so do expenses. So in water treatment plant, this is for the existing water treatment plant. Our activity is delivering and treating water. We did a lot of that this year. And so when the activity is up, chemicals are up, electricity is up. So it's those types of things related to that activity.
More use, more demand, more chemicals, more electricity, et cetera.
Yeah, and kind of a double whammy, right? We saw the inflation coming, but in this case of commodities like chemicals, inflation plus increased usage.
And probably drought conditions, probably increased the demand on water.
You got it.
Thanks.
All right, further discussion about this item? See none. If there is no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the budget adjustments, authorize the project budgets and transfers, and authorize staff to take appropriate actions to implement the City Council action. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk, roll up and roll. Members cast their vote. I've received seven yea votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Supplemental agreement number one for traffic signal and overhead sign structures inspection.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmembers Gary Jansen, Public Works Engineering. The item before you is a proposed supplemental agreement for traffic signal and overhead sign structure inspections. Our assets include 2,100 traffic signal facilities at over 600 intersections that require some level of regular inspection. Currently, the city's signal technicians perform visual traffic signal and overhead structure inspections, but they're only able to do that during routine inspection of other traffic signal components. The Federal Highway Administration recommends a comprehensive inspection every four years for all of these types of facilities as a matter of public safety. In October of 2020, the City Council approved an agreement with Trans Systems to provide Phase One for these inspections, which covered approximately 25% of the inventory. And there was also an option then to renew for a second phase, which is why we are here today. Trans Systems demonstrated an adept approach and expertise with Phase One, assigning appropriate staff and time of completion of the work that was required. Staff recommends selecting the option to renew the contract for Phase Two, which will cover another 25% of the inventory. We will work with a consultant to develop a plan moving forward, which includes a proposed schedule for the completion of all inspections, recommendations for a comprehensive maintenance and replacement plan, and estimated costs for the same, as well as a recommendation for where that budget would come from. We know there are some condition issues, especially related to older fabrication factors, but not sure on the severity of, especially with the number of facilities that we have. And so this has proven worthwhile so far with the first 25% that was completed. We have found some issues that were addressed at that time. We have had some critical issues with a few of our components over the last few years that really drives the need to keep moving forward with this. Specialized equipment and training is needed to analyze the condition of both the external and internal to the structures, including measurement of section loss and predicted remaining life of the asset. Our inventory also includes overhead sign structures, and while there aren't many of those, it's just as important to ensure structural soundness and safety for all of those facilities. The cost to inspect approximately one quarter, that says one-third, I apologize, of the city's traffic signal and overhead structures, including all staff-identified priority locations, is 150,000. This funding is included in the 2022 revised budget for street maintenance, signs, and signals. Staff recommends City Council approve supplemental agreement number one and authorize necessary signatures. I'll mention real quick that this recommended action does request approval of a necessary budget adjustment. That was an old hanger-on from the last item, and I apologize, it did not get removed. So the only action we need today is approval of the supplemental agreement number one and authorization of the necessary signatures. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? So you're saying at number five, you don't need a budget adjustment to be part of the motion?
Yes, sir.
Input from the public on this item? See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item? If there's no further discussion, I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the agreement and authorize necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk, roll up and roll. Members cast their vote. I've received seven yea votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
2023 park facility enhancements.
Welcome.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Troy Hauptman, Director of Parks and Recreation. The item I have for you today is in regards to 2023 park facility enhancements. A little bit of a background. This fund is an annual fund that we've been using since 20, since 2001, and it provides opportunity for us to make enhancements, improvements, repairs, and address safety issues within park assets. So we've had some situations where we've had to make some repairs to playgrounds, to other parts of buildings, and so we've used this fund for that, for those purposes. Last year, we had placed them a priority in regards to NASCAR Park, but because of that, we've had some other items take a higher priority, and so we had to use those funds in place of NASCAR Park. So that's one of the items that we're going to be looking at today for priorities. So the priorities for 2023 includes artificial turf at NASCAR Park, plaza improvements at Edgemore Park. Actually, within that building, we get a lot of flooding from the plaza going into the building, replacement of various amenities such as picnic tables, trash cans, bleachers, and other items, and then safety concerns throughout the parks. The financial considerations for the 2023 through the 2032 capital improvement program, it contains 550,000 in 2023 for facility improvements. The funding source for this project is general obligation bonds, and staff recommends initiating all 550,000 dollars at this time. Now, the recommended action is to initiate the project, adopt resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures. I'm available for any questions.
Questions for staff? See none. Thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? Welcome back, Celestra.
Thank you, Celestra Sett, Wichita native, founder of Safe Sentry Two. Our mission is changed to provide oversight of City Hall financial statements and transactions. Before I begin, I want to thank you, say thank you, big thank you, and Merry Christmas to the wonderful park staff that helped us renovate A Price Water Park. They were amazing. So I have to give personal thanks to Troy Hauptman, Dave McGuire, Leanne Sacks, and all the irrigation and cleanup and Rob with the fountains. They were just amazing, and that park looks so much better. So Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and thank you for helping us clean that park up. Okay, but real quickly, my question has to do mainly with NASCAR Park, because when we created that CID for NASCAR Park, part of the agreement included, and you all should know this, right? 10% of the surcharge on that CID goes back to maintaining NASCAR Park. Why isn't this taking care of replacing the artificial turf or the new turf or the grass turf? And as part of this cost, now they decided they want trees because the artificial turf is too hot? I mean, it just seems like with NASCAR Park, which benefits that CID, CID district, there's been a lot of problems. And one thing I also wonder is Peace, Love &amp; Pie moved out right when they found out they had to put CID signs in the business, and they went to Bradley Fair. Did we collect CID funds on them before they left? Those are my two questions. Thank you.
Can staff address what the 10% charge goes to and also whatever we know about the Pie Place?
So my understanding is that we do have funds in the CID fund, but not enough to really make any difference. And so what the plan is for that is to continue to build up that fund. And as we might need some more funds later on, we can actually use that for NASCAR Park and some of the surrounding areas. I do not know what the collection process was for each one of the businesses in that area. So I can't tell you whether that was collected or not.
Is there any reason to believe that it wasn't collected?
Mayor, I do believe that the funds were collected for CID before they left, not into the future, but for their obligation going backwards.
Further Republican input on this item? See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item? If there is no further discussion, then I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to adopt the bonding resolution, authorize the initiation of the project, and authorize necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk, roll up and roll. Members cast their vote. I've received seven yea votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Implementation of Code of Ethics Policy.
Welcome.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Excuse me, Dante Martin, Assistant City Manager. I'm going to provide you an overview of the steps that have been taken so far to implement the Code of Ethics that the City Council adopted in 2021, and also some of the barriers that exist to the Ethics Advisory Board continuing its work. Kathy Sexton was board and decided to join us this morning, and in all seriousness, she's conducted some analysis on behalf of PPMC, taking a look at the Code of Ethics and Policy 39, and also provided recommendations on how we can get the ball rolling on that work. I come just often enough to forget how this thing works. Wrong arrows. There we go. So you may recall back in May 2021, Council, City Council adopted Policy 39. It codified the Code of Ethics for elected and appointed officials, and also provided procedures for investigating ethics violations. In addition, Policy 39 created the board, but also provided guidelines and steps for conducting investigations and also enforcing the code. In addition to the Ethics Advisory Board's role in terms of investigating ethics complaints, it also reviews applications for ethics officers. The ethics officer is responsible for educating public officials, both elected and appointed, also responding to ethical inquiries on matters that are not subject to a pending complaint, as well as assisting the board with investigations into ethics complaints. It's important to note that both the Ethics Advisory Board and the ethics officer positions are unpaid positions. The Ethics Advisory Board held its first meeting in April of 2022. It took a little while to get the board started. You may recall that we had elections late 2021. We had new council members that were appointed or elected in early 2022. Once the board was fully impaneled, it began its work. In May of 2022, the Ethics Advisory Board reviewed applications for the ethics officer position. At that time, there were nine applicants that applied for the position. The Ethics Advisory Board recommended three of the nine be considered by the City Council for formal appointment as the ethics officer. Prior to the City Council beginning its consideration of the three ethics, excuse me, of the three applicants, staff determined that one candidate had moved away from Wichita, so was no longer eligible. Also, another applicant was ineligible due to policy requirements. There was some political affiliations that barred the candidate from serving in the ethics officer position. And also, the final candidate was interested in a paid position, and as I said earlier, this is an unpaid position. After reviewing the three applicant staff, talked to the Ethics Advisory Board and determined that there were no other qualified applicants. Upon that determination, and in an effort to continue the work of the Ethics Advisory Board and to implement the policy as adopted by Council, staff reached out to the Kansas Governmental Ethics Commission, as well as the League of Kansas Municipalities, to see if there was an opportunity for each of those, either of those agencies to help support the work of the Ethics Advisory Board. After lengthy conversations that took place over the course of several months with the executive directors of each agency, it was determined that neither could provide the level of support that was required by the board to implement and to execute the policy that was adopted by Council. Next step the city manager's office took was to reach out to the Public Policy Management Center of Wichita State, PPMC, to see if PPMC had the capacity and an interest in. in assisting us in implementing the Code of Ethics. Uh, PPMC submitted a proposal, uh, on what work it could provide to support the board, and in addition, conducted a preliminary review of Policy 39. Uh, that review resulted in or identified several sections of the policy that would preclude the Ethics Advisory Board, uh, from reviewing ethics complaints, uh, prior to an ethics officer being appointed. PPMC then revised its original proposal and, and offered a path forward by recommending that the City Council consider temporarily waiving the sections of the policy and authorizing PPMC and outside council to administer the policy and review ethics complaints on an interim basis, only until an ethics officer, uh, is appointed. It, it's important to note that PPMC's proposal, uh, did not include PPMC being engaged in, in, uh, chairing, uh, board meetings or voting on, uh, in regard to ethics complaints. Kathy Sexton is going to pick it up from here and provide an overview of the analysis that she and PPMC can conduct it.
Thank you, Dante. Kathy Sexton here, uh, from the WSU Public Policy Management Center. Indeed, as we looked at your new Policy 39 for the Code of Ethics, we se-, we found a very important word, and the word was "and", and it said clearly in a couple of sentences that a couple of actions could only be taken by two specific people, "and", and so you all, a few months ago, appointed outside council to help in this effort, and when I got together with him to map this out and think through it, it became quite obvious to us both at that time that, that only the ethics officer and outside council working together can review the, uh, the, all the complaints, any complaint that's filed, and then determine if they are valid on their face, if all the information's been provided that is required, and then start conducting investigations. So indeed, we could begin this effort by simply developing policy and procedures and getting all the process going, but that's kind of a fool's errand, so to speak, if you don't also actually start reviewing the complaints. And so, since there are a few complaints that have been, you know, sitting there waiting, so to speak, for consideration, we felt you're, you'd probably want to, uh, pursue dual paths. Um, have us start developing clarity about procedures, about how the, the work of the board is done, how the training is to be administered later, and, um, and how, what things in the policy that you all have identified over the past year or so that need to be tweaked so that we can make sure this board and this ethics officer, ethics officer gets on board, but also that the board can really be effective in its work. So those tweaks are things that we can work on going forward. But we just need your help to suspend policy. We don't want to start this effort by violating the policy. So if you could make exceptions to the policy on these items, that would allow us to proceed. Indeed, how would we proceed? Um, we, uh, the Public Policy Management Center, we would try to perform the administrative duties that are prescribed in your policy as duties of the ethics officer until that position gets filled, just to try to get, um, the process moving along, the board staffed, and to, um, get the complaints, um, processed. We would develop procedures, uh, and, uh, get those in writing and take those to the board for approvals. We would support the outside council in facilitating the board meetings in the absence of a chair. It's just a facilitation role, though. It's no voting role. As you all know, the board is seven members. So, I mean, there's no reason to have, um, us vote or chair, per se, other than just facilitating of the board member, of the board meetings themselves. Uh, the seven members can figure out what they want to do with the decision-making that needs to happen by them. But we would also be on board to, um, bring back to you, yes, this is my comment when I say, I'll be back here. Once we go to the board with some suggested revisions and get their input, we'd like to come back to a council meeting, um, early next year, hopefully, to present to you a few tweaks in the policy that we think might be helpful in getting this process moving along, and then, after that, help get the ethics officer position filled in a way that we could, we, the PPMC, could extricate from the process, and then you would have all the elements in place to proceed. The board, the officer, the budget, the policies, and the procedures. The outside council that you've already hired, they would do these things. They would review the complaints that have been filed, determine if frivolous or groundless on their face, as per the policy. Remember, they can't do that now because the policy says "and". It requires that person and the ethics officer, which is vacant. So your action today just allows the outside council to go ahead and get moving on reviewing these complaints, investigating the complaints, presenting their findings to the board, and letting the board make those decisions. I think Dante wants to come back and talk about the next. There he is.
Um, financial considerations related to the proposal. So the City of Wichita, Wichita State University, also Cedric County, has access to dedicated meal levy funding. Typically, that funding is used to fund, whether it be PPMC's support of city projects, as well as other Wichita State Departments, uh, and helping to support our work. This fund is also utilized to fund our management fellows that come in on an annual basis. So we, um, under the manager's authority and with the approval of President MoMA, we're able to access those funds, but we want it to be transparent in terms of how we plan to fund, uh, this proposal or the agreement with PPMC. Um, in regards to the funding for outside council, there is sufficient current funding, uh, within the Law Department budget, and as Kathy mentioned, you previously, uh, approved, uh, outside council and its work with the City of Wichita. Long recommendation, but it provides the authority that PPMC and outside council would need, uh, to do its work. So recommended actions on the slide, and Mayor, Council, let's stand for questions.
Questions for staff. Was, we got three people on the board right now. Let's start with, um, Councilmember Blueba.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, trying to get a good understanding here. It, it sounds like maybe this is kind of like a, an interim workaround until we have the ethics officer?
Absolutely. So we're asking PPMC and outside council to work with the Ethics Advisory Board to revise the, make recommendations or revisions to the policies, start to adopt bylaws, and then also help us tackle the issue or the challenge that we faced earlier this year in terms of hiring an ethics officer or bringing an ethics officer on board. Um, there has been some preliminary research into how other communities have approached this. As I mentioned earlier, one of the challenges that we faced was the expectation that it would be a paid position. So PPMC would evaluate and look at all of that and come back with recommendations.
Okay. So do we, do we have any kind of budget for what that ethics officer will, will cost?
Currently, we don't. So depending on the recommendation that comes back from PPMC and Ethics Advisory Board, we may very well be coming back to, uh, City Council asking for, or, or funding for the position, if that's the recommendation. At this point, I can't say that it is.
Okay. Do we have a budget for the additional legal costs that, that, um, are going to be outside of the $24,600 to PPMC?
We do. It was, the original policy anticipated the use of outside councils. Uh, the Law Department's budget includes funding for the outside council and talking with the Budget Office and the Law Department. We believe it can be funded within existing resources.
Okay. Do you know what that dollar value would be?
We don't. Jennifer may be able to help.
Uh, Councilmember, I can add that the contract with outside council is a not-to-exceed $50,000 amount, and we'll see where that goes.
Um, how many complaints do we currently have?
If I'm not mistaken, we have four, Councilor.
We have four? And then, um, have these at least been evaluated to see if there's anything illegal, something that needs to be shared with, with the DA or anything?
That's what we're asking your permission today to do. Your policy says the only people that can evaluate these are the ethics officer and the outside council, of which we have one of those people. And because the policy says "and", that attorney has said, "I don't have the authority to do this on my own." That's why we're asking for your help today.
So, so you can't, you can't share them with, with, um, if you think there's something illegal, you can't share them with? I'm, I'm try, I'm tr-, what I'm trying to do is trying to figure out, is, is this ethics? Or, or is there a law been broken, or with these issues and?
No, we haven't made any assessment of any laws that have been broken.
Okay, so we've just sat on the complaints and that's?
Right. We don't feel like we are legally empowered to do our work until, because of the way the policy is written, until you all empower us today.
Okay, that's all the questions I have right now.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so PPMC, are they going to have a board that reviews the ethics complaints? Or is it going to be two or three people? Um, who's going to make the judgment call from the perspective of PPMC?
The judgment call of what now?
Of whether the ethics complaints are valid enough to continue.
Okay. Thank you for that question. The PPMC is not going to make that call. The outside council that you have hired would make that call. Okay? So the first review is the outside council, in the absence of an ethics officer, would read the complaints, compare it to your policy. It's very clear. It's like A through P. Here's our policy. They would go through that and say, "Anything in this complaint that relates to this policy", and if not, you know, that would be, for example, a criteria that they may use that would say, "Well, this isn't a valid complaint because it doesn't address anything in the policy." But assuming it does, they would re-, make other, um, reviews and consider as to whether this is a valid complaint, and if so, then start the process laid out in the policy, which is essentially that you send the, the complaint to the person, uh, about whom the complaint was made, and let them have time to react and give a written response, and then you investigate. Now, what's an investigation? Just spitballing it here a little bit. An investigation might include not only reading what each complaint, the complaint says and the respondent says, but also maybe interviewing. Maybe you interview some of the witnesses that are quoted or mentioned in the documents, and then you get other perspectives. So whatever the investigation involves, that's what your outside council, the attorney that you have already hired, will do. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Yeah, man. It's good to see you, Kathy.
You too. Thank you very much.
This next one's, um, for staff, current staff. Are we looking at, um, possible fixes on our end as well? We're not just going to leave it up to the ethics board? Or is it going to be coming primarily from the ethics board about possible changes to, uh, the process?
So prior to Janet Johnson retiring in July, she conducted some, uh, preliminary work with the Law Department, as well as the, as well as the Ethics Advisory Board to identify potential changes. Keeping in mind, it's a council policy. Staff doesn't have the authority to make changes. And so that initial review that took place early last summer has been passed on to PPMC. PPMC will pick it up from there. Any recommended changes that come from PPMC and/or the board will be presented to council.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Vice Mayor Tuttle.
Thank you. And if I missed it, I'm sorry. Is there an estimated timeline of when we'll have some of this completed so that we can move forward? Because I know we've had four complaints. Some of them have been pending for quite a while, and so just curious to know if we have an estimated timeline of when this will be coming back to us again. Thank you.
It's a great question, and I will tell you, the ethics board is scheduled to meet tomorrow, and we're going to look at, they're going to look at the proposals that we've made so far based on, on your former staff Janet's, um, comments and everything we've been able to come up with. They're going to consider those recommendations, and if they can agree tomorrow, then I hope to be back before you here in January with adjustments to that policy. If they need a little more time, then they'll probably take it up at the January, um, 12th meeting. So we have monthly meetings planned with this board now, anticipating a lot of work that needs to get done and trying to move as rapidly as we can. As far as the complaints, it's with your approval today, um, the attorney will start, um, reviewing each complaint for their first, is it frivolous or is it groundless? And if not, then I think it'll be a matter of days before the, um, uh, requests are sent to the person being complained about, so that they can have their required seven days to respond, uh, with their take on the situation. As you know, if you count today is December 13th plus seven days, and all of a sudden we're in Christmas. And so in terms of the next step of the investigation, not sure how long that's going to take right now. It depends on who they need to interview, and if those people are on vacation or Christmas break or whatever. But we intend to, um, move as fast as we can, and when I come back to you, hopefully in January, with the policy changes, we might have a better sense of our timeline at that point. Thank you.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you. Kathy, you mentioned, um, the ethics board meeting tomorrow with some things to consider. Are those part of a public agenda that is available now?
Yes. My understanding is the agenda is on the website under, it's wichita.gov, and it's under the, um, Ethics Board section, that there is a link to, uh, an agenda.
Okay, and those policy considerations are listed in that agenda packet, those recommendations?
Uh, no. No. At this point, it's just the agenda that's online. What the, tomorrow night, we'll review all the policy tweaks that are suggested and let the board start talking about those and considering those. And that's why I say, if they're not comfortable with it tomorrow night, then they might take, you know, they might take their January meeting to look at that as well.
Those meetings are open to the public, are they not?
Oh, yes. It's a public meeting, yes. It's, um, it's also going to be streamed on Facebook and recorded and take minutes and all that kind of thing.
Are you asking for action to be taken on those policy considerations tomorrow? Because that's not a lot of time for the public to weigh in with their thoughts and concerns.
Uh, uh, fair point. Um, you all appointed this ethics board? So I'm thinking they're your appointees. They are the public. They're the ones who are trying to make these. Now, if there's additional time desired for other public, then we can figure that out. But I guess I looked at it as, that is the board that's supposed to be weighing in.
Some of those board members have not met as a board yet, because they've had two meetings in '21 and none in '22, and we've had at least four members change, uh, or at least new ones, and then at least one change, so, um, they haven't had a lot of time to gel.
Yeah. You know, one of the things on the agenda tomorrow night is to approve the minutes from the two meetings that they've held, and those meetings, I think, were in April and May of, of '22 of this year, right? Yeah, so most of them were together, but you're right. Since May, you know, I think one or two people have left, and another one was appointed in, in August, and so part of it is catching everybody up and introducing everybody to each other. This is the first time they're getting together as, as this group. Yep, thank you.
Councilmember Blueba.
Um, I don't know if Kathy can answer this or Dante. Did the city have an ethics policy prior to this ethics policy?
I'm probably going to have to defer to Jennifer. It's, so city staff has an ethics policy that is incorporated in our HR policy. That policy did not apply to City Council, of course. If I'm not mistaken, Jennifer, and please clarify here, there may be an ordinance that relates to City Council ethics. So the policy, uh, supplements what existed in ordinance prior to May 2021.
That's correct. There is a ordinance. It's actually ordinance 2.04, 0.050, Code of Ethics for Council Members, that is still an active ordinance.
So, so there was an ethics policy prior to this one?
It was an ordinance. It didn't, it didn't include process or details. It, it had some general statements of expectation.
But the major change with this one, and I think where we're at now, is this one has evaluation and enforcement. That probably the major difference?
That's one of the differences. Um, this, this policy, of course, includes definitions, um, more detail and more, more outright prohibitions, I think. Um, just a lot more, a lot more content.
Hey, can you remind me again the maximum penalty on the enforcement? You are found guilty of an ethics charge?
Bickets. Doctor Kathy might have it in the top of their head, but I think it's a $500 fine. Dollar amount.
I don't have the ordinance. Um, as far as, as far as the, excuse me, Jennifer, go.
I, I found it. It's to the, toward the end. "In case of serious violations of the Code of Ethics, the Ethics Advisory Board may also issue a public censure and/or levy fines no less than 100 and no more than 1,000 for each item in the complaint against an elect official that the board determines is a violation." So 100 to 1,000.
So between 100 and 1,000?
A range of 100 to 1,000.
Okay. Um, and, and what'd you say about censor? Was that, was that part of it too, or is that? Did you say something about censor?
Yes. When, um, ethics complaint, when a complaint is ruled a violation, the board may require the official, or will require the official to undergo appropriate ethics training. "In the case of serious violations of the Code of Ethics, the board may also issue a public censure and/or levy fines between 100 and $1,000."
And I might add, um, Jennifer, the sentence right before, the one you just read, says, "Failure to pay the fine within 60 days will result in public censure."
Is, is that the only reason for public censure, or?
No, it says, "When there's a serious violation, the board may issue and require a public censure and/or a fine."
Okay.
But Kathy's point is, I think, in addition to.
But regardless of how serious, um, the ethics violation is, there's, there's no making a council member or mayor step down or anything like that. That's, it's, it's, it wouldn't be legal. Is that correct?
The board would not have that authority. The, the, the policy as written does say, "If a complaint against an official is viola-, ruled violation, the board will require training. In case of serious violations, the board may..." In case of serious violations, the board may recommend to the city council that the official be removed from their position without the imposition of a fine. But you're right, that is only a recommendation.
They could make a recommendation, but there is no power in it.
Yeah, that's correct.
So, so the most they can do is ethics training, a fine between 100 and $1,000, and they can, what was the other?
Public censure.
Public censure. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just following up on what Jennifer said, I don't, I can't remember what council intent was at the time, but being that we have an ordinance that really doesn't do anything, it just gives aspirational statements. And then we created a policy that was much stronger. Could that be something that the board considers, making that an actual ordinance and not just a council policy? So it's cemented, cemented in municipal code?
So the board can make recommendations to the council to consider adopting an ordinance that codifies what's currently contained in policy to codify it in ordinance. The board could make the recommendation. Ultimately, the city council has to make the determination.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Where we left off with this conversation, not last time, but I think during the passage of this, was possibly expanding into other areas that are roughly defined as ethics and possibly, if not codifying the policy into ordinance, having a bridge from the ordinance over to the policy. The current ethics ordinance language, which is aspirational, is not in conflict with the policy. So they, they kind of both stand as they are. I do want to just point out that one of, and I'm supportive of this because I, I think it's important that we keep, we get a functional working policy in place, but I want to point out that a lot of the goal of this wasn't so much to do investigations and to, I guess, create this more of a reactionary environment for electives. A lot of the goal of this was for education, was in the legislature, if, under the Kansas Ethics Commission, you know, we would have trainings on what, new legislators on how to navigate the Kansas Ethics Commission. Because frankly, ethics isn't just, it's its own field. It's its own policy. It's not just what, what being nice or being common sense or being this or that, that's a part of it, but it's a lot of little details. And the way the Kansas Ethics Commission usually conducts itself is as an education type resource, where you can call them and say, hey, I have this vote coming up and I have this on my substantial interest form, is there a conflict? It doesn't seem like there's technically a conflict, but there might be, I want to get an opinion first. And they issue usually in a guidance. And that's what I think we wanted to see with this as well. If there was any confusion, local electives don't really have the luxury that state electives do by calling a ethics committee or an ethics board and asking ahead of time, what, what do we think about this? And also that training aspect of it. Again, the Kansas Ethics will come in and train legislators from both parties on what the expectations are and how to stay out of trouble. And if you do cross the line unknowingly, they will work with you to make sure it doesn't happen again. And that was a lot of the goal with this as well, is to create that resource. So as we move forward, I'm hoping that we don't just clear whatever backlog we might have, but also start putting into place the, the resources for not only those elected, but those who are running for office. If they're wondering about particular issues, they have a resource to reach out to. That's independent of our staff here.
And thank you for making that point, Mayor. You're absolutely correct. The policy includes provisions related to ethics education, both for those elected officials and appointed officials who are now assuming their roles and responsibilities. It requires the ethics officer to provide training within 30 days of appointment. There's also a process for ongoing training, not only for elected and appointed board members, but also to city officials. So exactly what you described, Mayor, the council have codified in the current policy. The focus of what we brought forward today were to identify the barriers we've had to executing the policy fully and provide a step forward or a path forward to keeping the ball rolling.
Excellent. Further questions for staff? There are none, then we will open up for comments. Welcome back.
Celestrusette, thank you for letting me speak today. Wichita native, Safe Century Two founder. I'm going to add some other titles. When I worked in the financial industry, I was a former accounting officer, I was a chief internal auditor, I was a certified internal auditor, I worked for the FDIC as a fraud investigator, and I was a bank examiner. So ethics is important to me, and I'm sure it's important to the Wichita taxpayers. The former mayor, I believe, lost reelection due to a perceived sweetheart deal with the Wichita Water Plant, a multimillion dollar contract. So I know that was part of a campaign for the new mayor, was ethics. And yet we still don't have an effective or operating ethics committee, and this bothers me. So I'm glad to see that you're moving ahead with the suggestions that were made to get it up and running even by contracting. Let me go again on ethics and integrity. This is why I stayed today, because it really is important to me and I'm sure other taxpayers feel the same way. But my career required that my behavior was strictly guided by ethics. Every year, I had to fill out a form listing the boards I sat on, the stock I owned, and when I did white collar crime investigations, I discovered people of all ages, races, creed, and religion stole money. They wiped out entire bank accounts from elderly parents, grandparents, aunts and uncles. We're all human. We make mistakes. But we know the difference between right and wrong, and it just takes that one slip up. You are in a particular position of power and control millions of dollars in funds. These cannot be given to family and friends. You cannot vote where there is a conflict of interest. And the reason why I support this ethics policy, number 39, is because there's penalties now, and that's called internal controls. We didn't have an internal auditor for three years and just hired one from inside the department recently. I couldn't believe we didn't have an internal auditor. We need internal controls that put you on the notice when your behavior crosses lines of propriety. And it's so important to do this that, I'm sorry if I sound like I'm lecturing, but it is critical you get this up and running. And I will be attending these meetings to make sure you've dotted your i's and crossed your t's for ethics. I would make one suggestion for the city council policy number 39. This is my suggestion. The whistleblower hotline is described in this policy. I brought a copy with me today. But it needs to roll outside of the HR department where it currently goes. If you make a whistleblower hotline complaint to the HR manager, I think it's Brzezinski, who's our HR manager, you, there can be retaliation. It may be subtle, but the word can get out that they filed a whistleblower complaint. I would suggest when you revise this policy, whistleblower hotline complaints go up into the Ethics Committee. In closing, I would say, thank you for hiring an internal auditor that was long overdue. You really need more than one. And thank you, Councilmember Frye, for asking me for my suggestions. I appreciate that we had a dialogue on that. You could go further. She needs her certification. She should be a certified internal auditor. And she should also be giving you a copy of her risk assessment and her audit plan and also the findings from her audit reports. But I'll stop. There's more work that needs to be done, but you absolutely have to start with getting this effective up and running. And public censure is important enough that if you get a complaint and it does rule to be a fine and public censure, I guarantee you, I will not be voting for you in any further election. Thank you.
Further input from the public? All right. Bring discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on the item? Councilmember Blubba.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, it's part of the, I've been a realtor for over 20 years and they have a very strong ethics policy. I mean, I mean, it's continually scrutinized and, and so it should be. And I realize there's costs associated with that. I guess I'm trying to get an accurate figure as to exactly how much it's going to cost us. I mean, it's been enough to exceed for attorney cost of $50,000, the PPMC $24,600. Right now, we've got four cases. That's about $6,000 a claim. So I just, I'm struggling with the taxpayer cost a little bit.
So my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's up to $50,000 is what it's budgeted, not we're spending $50,000 on four complaints? Is that correct? I just want to make sure that was what was said. It's budget is up to $50,000 and that's if you've got $50,000 worth of complaints.
I said not to exceed $50,000.
Not to what? Okay. We said $6,000 each. I don't think it's going to be $6,000 to review a complaint.
It's $24,600 for the contract with PPMC right now.
Yep. And that's the, and that's for them to review the policy. So, and I could be, and I'm not trying to argue, I'm just trying to understand, I'm thinking out loud. I think, and I want to understand your, your, your comment. So correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the $24,000 is already in a pot of money that we utilize for, for this type of stuff. It's with our mill levy and that is not the same as the money being used for the outside attorney. So that, so my understanding, those are two separate pots, that the 24 is for the research on the policy. It's similar to what we've done with, I think, our Sustainability Board and also our Diversity Inclusion Civil Rights Board, where we pass a policy and then the policy folks of our Wichita State go over it to make sure that if there's any issues with it. But those are two separate pots of money. And I don't know if that helps or not, but is that what?
I mean, it's, the mill levy is coming out of property tax dollars.
Right. What I mean is, it's not, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not, I'm not trying to debate. I'm trying to just, I really just want to get this out there as an understanding. The $24,000 is coming out, it comes out of the mill levy, it comes, but we can't, it is already earmarks, probably the wrong word, but it's already set aside for research with Wichita State. It's part of a holdover from when we were a municipal university. So it's not like we can use that money to do something else that's not related to Wichita State. Is that a correct read? Can you help me make that, tell me, because I want to be clear with that, but my understanding is, that's the read, is that we are spending money, but, but the real argument is, is this the policy we want to spend that money on? Because we have to spend this money, to an extent, on this type of policy research.
Right. Mayor, Assistant Manager Martin indicated it's for the financing of our fellowship program as well as for consulting services that we receive from the university. It's not just PPMC. Jeremy Hill's group also provides services for us.
I don't know if that furthers the discussion or not, but I wanted to just highlight that this wasn't money coming out of the general fund being shifted, it's money set aside for, for working with the university. Further discussion on this? I also share the, the desires of other folks who, who spoke today, that we want to get this functioning and get it working. I think that's more, again, more than just, just the investigation part. We also need to get someone in place who can help with future councils and with us if we, can help as a resource when needed. So that, I think is an important aspect that gets overlooked when it comes to the purpose of an ethics policy and an ethics officer. Further discussion? If there's no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the agreement with the public policy and management center at Wichita State University to develop administrative support functions to fully implement the city council policy 39 and approve exceptions to policy 39 to authorize outside council to review and investigate complaints received until such time as an election officer is appointed and designate the PPMC to perform administrative duties of the ethics officer until such time as an ethics officer is appointed. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. I receive 78 votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Repair or removal of dangerous and unsafe structures.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Caitlin Nethercutt with MABCD. The property under consideration today is one of eight cases that was first reviewed by the Board of Code Standards and Appeals on May 2nd, 2022. Six of the eight properties were referred to council for public hearings. One was moved to an emergency demolition status. This property has been given several extensions by the BCSA. And at the October 3 meeting, the board recommended referral of this property to the city council for a public hearing. 4810 East Gilbert does reside in District 3. This property has had an open housing case for 11 months and has a long history of code enforcement violations. Since 2012, neighborhood inspection has dealt with nine tall grass and weeds cases, seven nuisance cases, six emergency boardups, and nine housing cases. The property taxes are in arrears from 2019 to 2021 in the amount of $4,694.65, which includes special assessments for multiple boardups, multiple abatements, and multiple contracted mowings. This property was placarded as uninhabitable in January 2018 and December 2021. It has been the subject of environmental court. The last water consumption of the property was prior to February 2018. One reported police incident has occurred at this property in the last five years. The property has experienced not one, but two fires in the last 12 months. The current premise conditions include a recliner in the yard, trash and plywood scraps, and human waste in the stairwells to the basement. The structure itself is a vacant and boarded up duplex with cracking concrete basement walls, fire damaged and missing vinyl siding, improperly repaired ventilation holes in the roof, and dilapidated front and rear porches. The basement is full of tires and the floor joists have been damaged from the fires that started in the basement. Just a side note, the current owner has owned this property since 1976. He also owns multiple rental properties or vacant properties throughout the city. We boarded up another of his last week. That property had also had two fires in the last roughly 15 months or so. I'm not certain if there's anyone here today to speak on this property.
Is anyone here who represents the property or would be speaking to the property? Seeing none. Is there questions for staff? Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. We didn't get any looks from inside the house. Is there a reason for that?
Actually, I'm glad you ask about that, Councilmember Hoheisel. As you know, Courtney Capello is no longer with us. He retired in early November. He had made multiple attempts to schedule with this owner. The owner doesn't have a voicemail set up on his phone, so you can't leave messages and you can't confirm those appointments. And so the couple of times that they did get an appointment set, the owner was a no-show, no-call. So we tried, but the only inside information we have is what we can see through the windows before, excuse me, before it was boarded up and what we had in the fire reports from the fire department.
Thank you.
There's no further questions or discussion on this item. Chair recognizes Councilmember Hoheisel as this resides in District 3.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that the city council close the public hearing, adopt a resolution declaring the building to be a dangerous and unsafe structure, accept the BBCSA recommendation act, recommended action to proceed with condemnation, allowing 10 days to start demolition and 10 days to complete removal of the structure. Any extensions of the time granted to repair any structure would be contingent on the following, all taxes being paid before, what is that, today? The structure has been secured and will continue to be kept secured and the premises are mowed and free of debris as of December 13th and will be so maintained during renovation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made and then seconded. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. I receive 78 votes. That motion does pass. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
Let's open it up to appointments. There are appointments at this time. Councilmember Frye.
Thank you. I would like to appoint Martha Linsor to the Cultural Funding Committee and Derek Sorrells to the Transit Advisory Board.
There are further appointments? Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you.
I would like to appoint Lauren Skoloski to the Food and Farm Council.
Further appointments? If there's no further appointments, I'll make a motion to accept the appointments that were made.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open the roll. I've received 78 votes. That motion does pass. We are back on comments, the further comments. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, not a comment, just a question for legal. With redistricting done, do the members who are now not in your district serve the remainder of their term or are they just done?
There's really no provision for that in the ordinance. It seems like it would make some sense, but we can look into that and see if there's any guidance, but I would assume they continue to serve.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion or comments?
All right. If there's no further comments, then I will make the motion that we, that the city council recess into executive session for 30 minutes to receive information on personnel matters pursuant to KSA 754319B2 for a legal consultation with the city attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship about pending litigation, legal advice to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel. The executive session is required to protect the privacy interests of an identifiable individual, protect attorney-client privilege, and the public interest. The executive session will begin at 12:00 PM and end at 12:30, and then the meeting will resume back into the city council chambers directly following. So we'll start at 12:30 and at, excuse me, start at 12 o'clock and at 12:30. That gives us about 10 minutes for folks to get a brief break. So that was my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open the roll. I've received 78 votes. That motion does pass. We will be in executive session beginning at 12 o'clock in the boardroom. We will meet back here at 12:30.